601. We will have our city manager do the invocation today and we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by our city attorney.
Please bow your heads. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the time to give us to conduct business for the City of Hawthorne. We pray for all those that need help. We pray for those that have lost loved ones. And we pray that you give us the foresight to make the City of Hawthorne better. In the Lord's name, amen.
Can we all stand, put our right hand over our heart, face the flag, and say along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all."
We hope everyone's doing well. And we have a couple of presentations today. We have a presentation by council member Montero on the agenda. Academic achievement Hawthorne High, HMSA, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It is with the great enthusiasm that I'm presenting these certificates of academic achievements to these nine students. Represented some of the best student honored during the Hawthorne High and the Math and Science Academy Senior Award Night. I am highlighting these accomplishments in college selection because our schools are doing well despite some negative comments of some individuals in our community. Most of these seniors and their colleagues are going to some prestigious universities such as Columbia, Cornell, King College, UCLA, USC, USC Berkeley, CalPamone, et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, it is with great honor that I'm presenting these scholarships and certificate of achievement to these talents and bright students of Hawthorne High School and Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. And I wish you the best in your next academic journey. So when I call your name, can you please come and stand right here in the middle because there we're going to do a picture together? And then if my council can join me, we'll get the, because I have the certificates and also the checks, okay? So first one is Iber Castro. Iber is not here? Okay, I told, I told him you don't show up. I'm going to give this money to somebody else. Lauren Araya. All right. Jada O'Connor. Jada Thomas. Stephen Donnis. Tashmeen Balan. Cecilia Godoy. Carlos Gomez. And Alfredo Munoz. So this is one of your brightest students in Hawthorne because I was very impressed, not just because of their talent academically, but also for their, you know, volunteer service. You know how they, um, they spend hundreds of hours in the community service, you know, helping different organizations in Hawthorne. And I'm very proud of them and, and this is what our future looks like. It's going to be bright. So let's take a picture. And I also want to thank the parents, okay, because remember, parent involvement is very important. And I know for at least, for at least from the K-12, so you guys been there with all these students and the kids. So congratulations to the parents because you deserve the, the credit also. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate everybody, congratulate everybody for your, your hard work and your success. I want to thank you actually for excelling. It makes us look good. So we get the, um, you know, the, the, the better you guys do, the more success you guys have, it reflects on the rest of us as a city. And we get to kind of look good and brag about being from Hawthorne. So I want to thank you for your hard work and making us look good.
Yep.
I want you to, I want to congratulate all of you and to also encourage you to thank your parents. Because remember that you got here because of much of the work that your parents did to bring you to this place. So make sure you thank your parents for your achievement as well. And good luck to you and knock them dead out there. Good luck.
Great. And I also want to congratulate the students here from Hawthorne High and Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. I've always said it, and I'll say it again, that we have a great Sentinel Valley Union High School District. And we have a great Hawthorne School District, which produces great high school students and great student product. It's not only Wiseburn, okay? We have a great students that are catching up and exceeding even some of our local schools that we have in the area. So it's something to be proud of. HMSA and Hawthorne High Academies are in the high percentiles when it comes to comparing against some of those schools that people traditionally think are top. So congratulations. Let's give a round of applause to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our second presentate, uh, presentation presenter is not here. So there's nothing we can do about that. We will now proceed to, with item six, oral communications. Uh, Mr. City Clerk.
Pursuant to government code section 549, 54.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like we're back to normal. I have about six cards of people wanting to speak. So let's give it up for the residents who are here. Very important. We don't let any of that COVID stuff get us down and prevent us from doing the people's business. Everybody's getting vaccinated and everybody's doing their due diligence when it comes to things. What you should be doing is washing your hands after you go to the bathroom, after you eat. The normal things you should be doing. And that's one of the main reasons that lack of good hygiene allowed for it to spread. So now everybody is doing the right thing. Sergio Esparsa, homeless on 119th Yukon. Go ahead, sir. Can you speak into the mic? Maybe lean in a little tiny bit, please?
Um, thank you, members of this council. So this partial of land is located on Yukon and 119th Street. Now, if you look on a Google map, you're not really going to see an address for it. Because it, you're sharing the kind of, the 105 runs through it. Yukon is Inglewood. It's gated. It's, I believe, in agreement from Hawthorne and Inglewood to have that area gated because the LA River runs there. So when it comes to responses by dispatch, Inglewood, Hawthorne, CHP, uh, this is the concern. So Fire Station 162 responds several incidents on this partial of land between the hours of 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM. They have, this is regarding the homeless encampment that has been slowly kind of creeping in. You know, the cities and CHP clears them out in other areas around Prairie and Imperial. Now they found ways to get to that point. So they have broken into my neighbor's truck, uh, my parents' trucks, my car. They break the car keys. They break the windows, ignition. They have even stolen my neighbor's GMC white work van this past weekend and which was impounded by Hawthorne PD. Now, when I mean break into, I mean they break into vehicles. They steal self-employed individuals' properties um, to use for whatever they use it for. They are drug addicts. And I hate to say this, you know, everyone should be treated as equal individuals. But these people are drug addicts. They are thieves. They are individuals who have nothing to lose. Uh, society has pushed them aside. And on the cherry on top, many of them have outbursts of mental health concerns. They are highly active between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. Now, Inglewood Police has responded, shows up, three minutes later, they leave because it is on that partial of land that belongs to the City of Hawthorne. I've been connected to dispatch of Hawthorne. They don't send anyone. They say they'll send it to uh, mental health experts that are a part of the city's um, task force. Haven't seen them. So I please implore you to remove the homeless encampment, to work with the City of Inglewood, and permanently close off that area. Strengthen the gates and locks because they have broken the locks. And they control who of their homeless brothers and sisters go in and out of that area. The PD will not go beyond that point. So because, believe it or not, using that bolt cutters, they have not only broken into city, um, blocked off areas, but now they control um, the fear of our community. There are members of our community who constantly live in fear, paranoia, and most importantly, high anxiety. Because we've never had an issue until this past couple of months. Thank you. I yield my time.
Mr. Esparsa, uh, please, uh, come to the right, your right, so you can talk to our city manager. So he can, can get your information and connect you to our police department or homeless task force. Dana Williams Hunter, president of Our Commitment Incorporated nonprofit, talking about the Hawthorne Financial Literacy Program. Hi. Welcome.
Thank you all so much for having me today. First of all, I'd like to say hello to everyone and congratulate you all on your centennial anniversary. Uh, and I want to thank you all for allowing our commitment to be part of this fantastic program. Uh, this is sixteen weeks, or I'm sorry, eighteen weeks, sixteen seminars, uh, designed to help people in the City of Hawthorne and our neighboring cities as well, uh, realize their dream of homeownership. And the way to do that is to, uh, work through financial literacy programs. Uh, this has been proven to be very effective in other cities. Uh, and it's something that, um, is working pretty much around whenever you have financial literacy. You have people who feel empowered to go into the homeownership, um, process, into their homeownership journey. So this here is, I brought some flyers and I actually brought, uh, some information. Oh, here we go. I brought some flyers and I also brought, um, a survey as well that I'll give you guys that we are going to give out to people so that we can kind of monitor how effective the program is in helping them to realize their dream of home ownership. Uh, we have a, a staff of fantastic, um, real estate agents and, um, mortgage brokers and people who, uh, can help people understand the process and simplify it. Because I think a lot of times, uh, people are looking and they think that this is such a daunting process. And really, it can be simplified if you have the right people there. So, um, I, well, I also want to give you this too. Here is a couple of the, this is a, the survey that people are going to get. And then after this, we want to give you all the data so that we can see exactly how we want to tweak the program maybe for next year or to see exactly where we want to go with it or how we want to expand upon it. Uh, but I think this here, it covers four topics. It covers the entire home buying process is one week. Uh, budgeting basics for another week, credit readiness, which is a really big thing for a lot of people. Uh, and also building an emergency fund, which includes taxes and insurance and things like that, things to help them protect their assets. And that's what this is about. Actually, there's some flyers that were left out here in the room here, but I'll also leave some more for you guys if you want. And I yield my time.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, thank you for offering this to the residents of the City of Hawthorne. Um, I'm teaching a business math class right now where we're balancing out checkbooks. So, and, uh, students have learned so many new skills that they didn't know. So it's a helpful skill to be able to balance out your checkbook and your, and your, uh, money that you have in order to make some responsible decisions. And that's, we, we have some bad habits out there, right? So, all right. Thank you, ma'am.
Learn how to save. Have to learn how to save money.
How to save money, yeah. I was taking a look at this. It's like so interesting. Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I just want to make two announcements. One is that the Moose Lodge and the Hawthorne Chamber is going to have a casino night on August 13th from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And there will be door prizes. There will be cash money. There will be the taco lady. And it's going to be a very exciting night. That's August 13th, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Then on September 26th, we're going to have the golf tournament. It starts at 12:00 noon with a shotgun. There'll be lunch and a buffet dinner. There'll be door prizes again and cash money given out. And the last thing I want to say is, uh, the, last week, I had someone try and break into my car in front of the chamber office. And he was trying to get in through my window, saying that he just got out of jail and needed money. And, uh, he, I asked him to leave several times. He'd walk away and come back. I finally had to call the police department. And I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Department. When I called, within two minutes, they were there. And I really thank them for that. Uh, I think our police department is great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim Matthews, Rooftop Solar Utility Company. Proposal. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council members. Uh, I'm a homeowner with a rooftop solar power generating system. I've written my comments down to be as clear as I can with it. Um, tonight I am asking, uh, you to formally oppose the attempt by the California Investor-Owned Utilities, referred to as IOUs, Pacific Gas and Electric, San Diego Gas and Electric, and Southern California Edison to change the structure of net energy metering, NEM, systems related to rooftop solar power generating systems. I know you can't make the decision tonight, but I hope my request initiates the steps you must take to pass the resolution opposing the IOU proposal. When I analyzed if I would install a rooftop solar power generating system, my decision was to install and help generate solar power, even though it would take forever for me to recoup my installation costs by generating my own electricity. My decision was based on the net metering agreements in place at the time. Never did I expect to have those rights taken away and be charged a tax to generate solar power. Um, I'm going to cut a lot of this out here. Basically, the IOUs are before the California Public Utilities Commission wanting to change net metering and charge us for generating and give us a tax, um, which would be more than what my bill was before, um, I installed the solar power system. Um, I have a packet of information here. Councilwoman English received it electronically. Um, and I'm going to cut my comments short, but I would hope that you would reach out on behalf of me and other business people and homeowners here and oppose this measure. And if you would, uh, submit the resolution and also encourage the County of Los Angeles Port of Supervisors and South Bay Cities Councils of Governments to also sign and submit the resolution. Um, I don't feel it's fair that I'm trying to help the economy and, and generate power. And it's a requirement that power, that solar power be installed on rooftops with new construction. I think it's wrong what the utilities are trying to do. And I hope the city leaders, uh, take care of us and join these other cities and entities in opposing this, uh, proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Matthews, if you have anything written to give to the council, if you could, please give it to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Cordaro Davis, The Crossroads, Los Angeles, issued with the business license.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, city councilmen and women. Uh, my name is Cordaro Davis. I'm the owner of The Crossroads LA, located at 13825 Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, purchased a business in October of 2021, opened for business on January 1st, 2022, which I've been, I filed my application for my permit to do business in the City of Hawthorne. And I have yet to get my business license so I can operate fully. Started with a staff of five people. Now I'm down to one. And I'm not able to operate. Uh, I'm, I'm known as a chef, private chef for a couple of celebrities here in Los Angeles and also travel as well. But I also have a nice decorated background. I have an MBA from University of Maryland. So I have a, a full plan with my, I have two special licenses. Have a beer and wine and a brewing license, which is very unique to South Bay. I'm the only one with that license. I came to Hawthorne. Uh, I live here now. I came here to, to build with this city. I see an opportunity. Uh, and also my works in the entertainment industry. I want to build, bring that to Hawthorne. Uh, with my six months being here, I've worked with Common Space, which was one of the award winners of the businesses of the year, to teach me and also contract brew with them, attacking my own space. So I would love to work with you all. I want to come here, not to badmouth anyone or put anyone out on Front Street, but to, for you all to meet me, so I can meet you all as well, build a relationship with the city and you all, so we can work together. And that's all.
Um, sir, if you want to give the, your information to our city manager, uh, he can take a look to see what the status and he can maybe-
Can you repeat the address again, please?
Yes, it's a-
He can update you, sir.
Oh, yes. I've, I've been updated. Uh, it's, so every office has gave me a different story, from licenses to planning to code enforcement.
Well, let's get you a single story.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know what's happening. No, I think we have a request for an address.
Yeah, I, I need the address again, please.
Yes, sir. The address is 13825 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, briefly, councilman?
Yeah, Mr. Davis, we are aware of your, um, situation. We are working to, to resolve it. So, um, thank you for coming, but, um, we're, we're going to do our best to resolve this as quickly as possible.
Thank you, sir. Gordon Michael Migo, California wildfires.
Hello, everyone. Uh, name is Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. Uh, California wildfires, uh, since the beginning of this new century, but more especially so in the last five, 10 years, we've been seeing, uh, an exploding number of, uh, you know, fires. Uh, you know, the frequency and the severity of the fires up and down the state of California. And they're just claiming, you know, hundreds and thousands of, uh, you know, middle-class, uh, neighborhood homes. And, uh, it's, it's a very troubling, you know, sight to see, you know, people, I mean, uh, they're always talking about, you know, the homeless, you know, we're, we're just creating more homeless. And then of course, they're talking about, they want to build millions of new homes, uh, to provide, uh, for the people here. But you know, it just seems like we're kind of chasing, chasing that, uh, in a kind of a difficult situation. But, uh, one thing I find really of concern is that, uh, the state of California, which, uh, of course, the, the voters, uh, in a recent election, uh, voted to, uh, provide funding sources to basically deal with, uh, uh, these wildfires, you know, whatever sources we need for up and down the state. And I find it really amazing that the last five years, almost really nothing has been done on, on state level that what we should be doing is, you know, there's a lot of these retired DC-10, 747 aircraft that, uh, could be acquired with the money that the state has and, uh, that's already been, uh, approved by the voters and so forth. And that, uh, what we need is to have, uh, a fleet of planes, you know, DC-10, 747s converted, uh, for the big water drops. Uh, that we would have maybe four, five, six planes, uh, that would be located at various airports from Northern California to Central California to Southern California, down, uh, basically from the Oregon border down to, uh, you know, Mexican border. And that way, at the drop of a hat, you know, uh, you know, whatever, snap of a finger, we can just get those planes out there. And, because you see on the news, uh, in, in, uh, in these recent years where, you know, small fires that, uh, you know, uh, are sitting there and then people say, oh, why aren't they dealing with it? Why, they, they don't have these resources. Oh, yeah, they ran out these Canadian aircraft, but we should have them here. Not have to real, uh, you know, rely on outside sources and have it ready to go. And, uh, so maybe I would like to see where the City of Hawthorne, uh, adopts a resolution in conjunction with other cities in the South Bay area and so forth. And to get, uh, you know, the state of California to get with, get, uh, you know, the state of California to get with it, you know? And, uh, time is of the essence. Uh, on, on another subject, the, uh, another, the upcoming, uh, City of Hawthorne 100th Anniversary, uh, the dinner on Friday, uh, July the 8th. Uh, I just want to let you know that I and, uh, a number of others have already, uh, bought, uh, you know, basically half a table already. And we're, uh, we're looking to, you know, fill the whole table. So I want to encourage a lot of the people out there that, it's going to be a really great event. So, uh, you know, go to the Hoffman Memorial Center and you can, uh, the, they're $30 per individual or, you know, whole table, I believe is like $250. Uh, and then there's a business, uh, you know, purchases, you know, for the tables. So, uh, I, it's going to be a great, uh, great event, terrific food and a lot of camaraderie. And, uh, and I think, uh, you'll really enjoy it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Um, we don't long, we no longer have our presentation section of the evening. We do have Mr. Rambo. If you can do your presentation within the five minutes that we have under social, uh, oral communications. And I think you have somebody that accompanies you, so we can extend it to 10 for your full presentation, sir. Um, your assistant would, is, are you going to need them to present as well?
Uh, no, just-
All right, so we'll count that as your additional presentation.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Of course, of course.
So I have, Mayor and Council, an update of what the telehealth ban has been up to for the last, I think, uh, seven months or so. I'll bring this to, more data this time, Mayor.
Let me take a look.
Thank you. The, the team was designing. I said, start with the data. Start with the data. And here, Von, if you don't mind, this are the three locations that we're parking at, if you want to take a look at. We're trying to do a really good job at fine tuning that although you're looking at the data there on one of the pages, what you're looking at here, Mayor, is a breakdown of the individuals' names. Yeah, so that right there is a- Yeah, so that right there is a kind of a visual presentation of us in Hawthorne, but it also has some of the data in terms of the services that are most commonly asked for in L A, I'm sorry, in Hawthorne. That's just kind of giving you a visual idea of it, but I know that data page is important to you. The second sheet that I gave you, kind of so you can just pass all around, was, I know we generally talked about it, but I really wanted you to see the beginning to the end. So when a resident actually walks up to the van, what service they ask for, and the result of it, and that's kind of an idea of the spreadsheet. Now Oracle, of course, I think they'll be done with new, build the new database that we're talking about, they'll be done, I think, in two weeks now, we just kind of approved it today. So that's generally just from the Google sheet that we've been doing for like the last year and a half all through the county, but I want it to be more thorough with you, just so you can see it, you can fine tune it, tell us how it should go. And the ultimate goal, when we started with the telehealth van here, it's, we just hit this month, two years. So we've just hit this month, two years, we're over fifteen thousand sessions, so, and you're the first city that we've ever had as an actual agreement trying to pull this off. So we're still open, like I said, six, seven months ago, I'm still open with questions, fine tuning. Mr. Patterson does a great job calling us, telling us how to fine tune things. If the van's parking at City of Hawthorne, I'm sorry, the City Hall, if it's not thorough, we'll find out other places it's more thorough. So we're very flexible on how it works, but that's an entire breakdown right there, and I'm open for any questions.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Thank you very much for this, you know, this very comprehensive report. So one thing I'm noticing, there are a lot of people who are requesting mental health screening, and I, and they actually come to you and say they need mental health support.
Well, those are the ones, they come up, the mental health screenings are usually when they either say they're in addiction issue, addiction issues, you know, if it has to fall with anything that has to do, because mental health is so broad, so anything that's not shelter-based or insurance-based is usually falling in kind of that mental health sphere, when they're asking, you know, is there someone who could take me to B H S to, you know, what do I need to do about? We get a lot of women who are coming asking about their husbands, and then they'll bring the husbands later, something like that, but that's usually because of mental health challenges. Lot of it, we're noticing, has to do with no jobs or looking for jobs and trying to figure out what they need to do to get them. So all of those will fall within the mental health screening side. Most of those, majority of them, we actually send them to Behavioral Health Services, so we worked out something with Shirley Summers, the CEO there, and Denise Shook, on working with, and they have actually a new program that they're actually doing too, I C S, which is Integrated Care Services, which is really a lot for those mental health screening, you know, where it's kind of a wraparound approach to taking care of a resident. So that mental health screening is a generalization of everyone with any type of mental challenges at all.
Now, have you broken this down so that you, you're able to say who, how many of these are homeless?
No, we actually don't ask them about, we used to ask them when we first walked up with it, and we saw it was a touchy answer, we used to ask him that, we actually stopped asking that because we saw how it made them feel, and so they would, of course, say yes, of course, they would say they have a place to live. We would even see them getting out of a Explorer with multiple people, and we knew they lived in the Explorer, and they would still say they had a place to go. So it wasn't really as accurate. We also took off, when we used to ask them originally when we started about kids, you know, do you have kids, because we wanted to be able to track in data, how many people are, and we saw that was a sensitive one, and we realized a lot of people didn't want to say they lost their kids or sensitive issues about the kids. So when it came to Hawthorne, we realized we only had just a few minutes with them before we completely lost them, so we fine tuned it down, but we'll open it up if it's a priority for the city to know.
It's just interesting to me, interesting, I'm not terribly surprised that we have a lot of people who have mental health issues.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that probably many of these are also homeless.
They are.
So I would like to know, you know, I would like to know what their, what their status is as far as, as far as homelessness, because it, I have a theory that, and it's not just my theory, but many people believe that the genesis of homelessness in many cases is mental, mental.
Illnesses.
Mental illness.
Mental challenges.
Drug addiction. And that this has led to the conditions that produce the homelessness. So I think that that, I think the society has not, has not dealt with that enough as a, as a serious issue, as an issue that is behind the homelessness issue.
And you're a hundred percent right. I was just literally in the car before I walked in, I was on the phone with Dr. Sharon, who's the director of L A County's Mental Health, and that's one of the things he constantly brings up is, although a lot of the funding goes to defunding the police or police reform, et cetera, it all starts with mental health. And that's what we're noticing right now, too, is it all starts and ends with, and also, Ms. Valentine, one of the things to keep in mind is homeless is relative, because you have a lot of people in apartments that actually aren't paying rent because the government is covering the rent. So, you know, on paper, they're technically still homeless, the government is just kind of covering it until they can figure out on the federal level what to do. So they, what, maybe one of the questions we could ask is if they're in need of a place to live.
I think that's probably.
Maybe that's the question that we ask.
That you should ask, yes. And the other thing I wanted to ask you is, are you, what are you seeing as far as the numbers? Are the numbers going up? Are they going down? Are they staying the same?
They're going up, tremendously, especially going up because the, there's not as many police on the streets, and obviously the things have gotten a lot worse, so they're definitely going up. And I'm seeing more, I think when we first started this, and I gave you the information about three, four months ago, it wasn't as many mental health. I thought the push was going to be on shelters, but it wasn't. It actually shifted to a very strong mental health issue. We are doing the Juneteenth with Supervisor Mitchell next, next, on the eighth? No, not your day. When is it?
Friday, the seventeenth.
Yeah, Friday, it's this weekend, it's this weekend.
It is Friday.
Yeah, we're doing it this weekend with, with Ms. Mitchell, and we have, we have almost four hundred people who signed up for the telehealth van to be there. We're there already, we have two vans that are going to be there, if you're going to be there, but we have that many people who just signed up for mental health support, to where I had to call B H S and ask for backup, just because I know we can't take that many people, but that's how many people are coming for mental health support.
Okay, just a moment, we've.
Thank you.
We've exceeded the ten minutes.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 we've exceeded the ten minutes, I'm going to close oral communications and reopen it, so. Oral communications, communications is closed temporarily, just so we can have a little bit more back and forth, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Rambo. Who is Coretta?
Coretta is who we brought in to handle the covered community, the covered California, that's how we're able to leverage, not having to pay it, right.
For the medical insurance. Now, when you refer these individuals to B H S or to some other places, do you guys follow up to make sure that they go to the place?
We actually don't, we don't have the bandwidth to do it, but it is something that I would like to do, it's just something like a B H S, where it's like seven hundred employees, a little bit challenging. Maybe now, I do have a meeting coming up with Shirley next week to talk about, she actually asked us, what can we do more in a collaboration, because I think they have the fourth clinic now opening up in your area? So now she's asking, what can we do more as a collaborative effort, because she's noticing, especially your, the B H S that opened up on Prairie and by rallies, Prairie, was that Prairie and El Segundo, or El Segundo? El Segundo, they're getting a lot of the walk-ins that we're sending from the van on hundred and eighteen, so they're asking, what can we do more deliberate to make them to move a partner, that's something we should talk about as a city.
Because follow up is very important, right? Because if they stop by your van by that, you don't know actually if they went to B H S for service, so we need to know that.
We would probably create then kind of some type of incentive, like what we did for Sharp when we were doing the twenty dollar grocery store gift cards for people who were visiting X amount of times, and it was kind of increasing our visitation rate, because most people won't naturally come to us. They will if we do incentives, so one of the things that we were thinking about doing in my office was creating kind of ten dollar grocery cards, right? Yeah, and I would just go back to Ralph's like we did last time and have them contribute to, you know, if they come back and keep us updated, maybe we can come up with some type of incentive program that we can start here in the city.
Do they give you like a phone number?
They do sometimes, sometimes, sometimes they do. Sometimes they do, it's a little tricky, because a lot of their phones are throwaway phones or Metrophones or Obama phones, so it's a little tricky with the phone numbers. We're trying to come up with the best terminology to get the number, so what we just started doing about two weeks ago is, you can actually see, that's an actual picture in the booklet with the video, with the pictures, that's actually Rebecca, who's one of the, one of the local resource operators in your area. I think that particular call, we saw was delicate to ask them for their phone number, because they didn't know if they're going to be tracked or in trouble or something. So we realized, why don't we just say, hey, if you give us your, would you like to have, if we can find the information that you're looking for, a shelter or food or something, what's the number we can give you a call back on? We saw that was a little bit easier for them to give us the phone number, so, so we have to incorporate kind of terminology like that, which is what we're learning, to get the answers that we need.
Now, one of the things that, you know, we know mental health has been a crisis, you know, in the United States for a long, long time because of lack of funding, right? So now, do you see that because of COVID, that is more mental health issue brought up to daylight because of COVID, you know, because people, you know, over two years lockdown, and they lost their jobs, some lost their home?
It's, it's quantified, it's, it's not, it's, it's, I'm doing a mental health concert with the Department of Mental Health in L A County and everyone, with the CEO's office, it's, the numbers are not even written, how we're taking care of L A C C D, for example, with the chancellor and everybody over the nine, the nine colleges as well. Students are jumping from college buildings right now is a normal thing to commit to, this is how bad it is, and a lot of their college graduates are actually homeless. Like, so, so for example, we're creating, the telehealth van will be parked at all nine schools to try to kind of balance that. It's, unless people work together, like how you guys would do with B H S, and, you know, people work together, it's going to be a very hard thing to fix, because kind of everybody's in their own silo, trying to do what they think is best or what their board members best. You guys did well, I think if we brought in more agencies that are around here who are county-funded, it would help speed it up. Having the vans like how we have, I'm noticing that actually is a good idea, staying on top of it, maybe something we need to start implementing and do to make sure, but it's definitely been helpful. We started very low, and now it's kind of picking up. You see a lot of the duplicate names on there, we're noticing, they're looking at us like a clinic.
Yeah.
Right? They know we're not going to take them, they can ask us even about their cough, they're looking at us like a clinic. And I think we're a good answer to what they're trying to do with nine eight eight, the new mental health number that the county's trying to incorporate, so, but anyway.
Have you looked into maybe, looking for more funding for like the federal government?
I am.
From the health department?
I am, we haven't truly did that all the way yet, like even the, I'm even doing the fundraising for the mental health concert that's at the YouTube Theater. I mean, it's like a seven hundred thousand dollar thing that we're part of the fundraising. I'm not a big, I do a lot of fundraising when I was Rambo House, most of the things that I did for the state was fundraising, not really used to this one as much, I'm sensitive about it, because even, when you do fundraising, I'm getting a lot of people, I even get people who try to invest, like, we get a lot of people who do see this is some growth areas, I'm sensitive, because it's like, right now, Ms. Patterson could call me and we can switch some things up based on the community, and when you start bringing in outside funding, so I'm open to it, I'm just probably not as open as most people would be who just wants to build a big business, I'm more sensitive to how the community is, and I like it doing it this way, because I believe if we can do it right, we can kind of, kind of, you know, teach others how to do it. That's what my hope is, I know it's not the best business model, but that's what we've been doing, we taught Sharp how to do it, so Sharp created their own telehealth vans, we taught B H S how to do it, so B H S can invest in their own telehealth vans, that's kind of how we've been able to do it, and the way I can answer questions clearly how I'm answering to you because of my experience, is because of things like this, before investors or fundraising comes.
Yeah, just keep, keep, keep that in mind, because there is a lot of talk in Washington, D C, and the Congress about telehealth and mental health, so money's coming.
Yeah.
So, so do not disregard that money, okay, because it will be good for you to partner with the cities or even B H S to get some funding that you can provide more additional service.
The A R P, you know, the American Rescue Dollars, actually came through Holly Mitchell's office, and they asked us to, they actually, what's happening is they're finding how they, how they want to use the funds, and they're contacting the telehealth van to be a part of that, versus us saying the telehealth van works like this, like probation, for example, like we were going to do originally with Mr. Kim, how they can, they're actually saying, listen, this is how our dollar works, can the telehealth van fit with how our dollar works? So we're noticing that's a better ask than us just kind of coming up saying, give us the money, give us the money, give us the money. So we're seeing how that works now, but like I said, we just hit two years this month, and we just really started picking up momentum within the last year.
Thank you for, I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
May I put in?
Well, in the last, just few months compared to the first number of months, do you have like those numbers, because you say like, hey, how many people you've seen in the last four months compared to the previous five months?
I can look at it, but based on the dates, I'll look at it, we'll go back and we'll look at it based on the dates, but you're right, we did definitely pick up, I knew it was going to be slow the first few months, because people didn't know if they were going to be taken out of Hawthorne, right? We were a big white van, people didn't know if we were friend or foe, and which is why I think we're getting a lot of the people coming back again. Just like now, if we went back, if we continued, it's going to probably continue, but we won't do well unless we're able to like partner with like the B H Ss and stuff, where we can actually have a partner that's creating kind of a wraparound support system on them, because they're looking at us like their doctor's office, they're not going to Cedars anymore, they're not going to Kaiser anymore, they're kind of walking to the van. So we'd need to do partnerships with like people like B H S, we need to do, this is our job, we need to do partnerships with, instead of the Cedar Sinai, we need to do partnerships with UCLA Health, who we've been talking to, who have new vans coming, we need to create that and maybe create a way where if they walk to your vans, we can get them to the locations, because we're losing people that way as well, with just giving them maps, how to get to places, we're losing them, between coming to the van and then going through an addiction moment, and hoping that they get to, who we're, because remember, we're calling people, so if Lisa walks to the van, her name's still Lisa, if Lisa walks to the van, Rebecca is, okay, Lisa, I understand, give me a second, we're physically calling the shelters at Lhasa, at Alasa, who's kind of within that five, ten mile radius, we're calling B H S, we're calling places to see where she can go. The problem is, when we give her the information to go there, like I said, the follow up is an all point, right?
I have another question, though, in your report, a lot of the results are provided brochures.
Yeah.
What are the different type of brochures that you provide?
B H S, B H S, Sharp, Lhasa gives us a lot of brochures, Covered California gives us a lot of brochure of their partners, just, just trying to keep them engaged with information. We don't have any brochure that we give them as telehealth van so far, we just have the postcards that are about to go out into the community.
So B H S's brochures just talk about the services they provide, where their location is at?
Yeah, these, things like this, that B H S creates and does, just to let the community know these are free services, integrated healthcare, family, you know, F S P, wraparound, things like that, do we give them addiction, things like that. They actually have the right therapists as well, right? Because with us, they're looking at us like therapists, but we're calling it screening from a compliance standpoint, B H S, Sharp, Shields for Families, those are therapists, those are contracted, county-funded therapists, and our job is to get the people from your van to have an actual therapist.
Let me throw something at you, have you thought about, in the future, have another set of vans that can transport these people, that come to your van, transport them to the location to get the service?
I have them, we have them already, they're just not funded, so they're just parked at our lot until we can figure out the funding to make that happen, but we saw that kind of happening a while, and me and Mr. Kim was even talking about that, because I think he brought that up to me a long time ago, like, we're going to probably eventually need some type of support like that, and, and he was right, we actually do need that type of support.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's try to conclude this, because we still have oral communications, go ahead.
Yeah, I noticed that you don't have the dates that you see these people, is there some way you can add a field on here to provide the dates?
I can.
Okay, and, because that way we can tell, I assume we would be able to tell if there are people coming in again, repeaters.
Especially the date and how far apart they are from each other.
Correct.
Okay, that's a good point.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right.
You got that, Crystal? Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you for assembling this, this is well organized, I know we have four different copies that are up here, but. I know we have four different copies that are up here, but it looks like those are from the four different locations. So I'd like to suggest that we give all these four copies to our city manager so that we can get sets for all of our council member colleagues. Do you have this?
Yes.
All right.
Are they not the same?
No. There were five locations, right, Mr. Rambo? Because I-
There were three main locations, Mayor, and then we started jumping to different locations when we started taking them from City Hall. So for example, one of the locations may on there. I haven't seen that. We just printed it before we came, but one should be like DMV, for example, which we're parked a lot at.
Could you, could you?
Do you want to make a copy of it? I can email you too.
Could you get an email from him and just print out a complete set of all the locations?
Okay, okay.
Because it seems like there's a little mixture there of things.
Okay. And I will highlight it a little bit more, Mayor, so you guys won't get confused with.
No, it's just that the, it's just that, no, it's just that some, they were on separate different pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want it all on one?
However you think is, is best to organize it so that we could see it easy. It was well put together.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, I will now reopen oral communications.
Thank you, Mr. Rambo.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody who wishes to address the city council? If not, I'll declare oral, yes, go ahead, come on, miss.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am up here in regards to a couple of weeks ago on the meeting, it was mentioned by your, by you, Mr. Alex, where I guess that you were going to go ahead and cite residents with driveways to the fullest if we didn't use them. And I just wanted more clarification on that because I will tell you that I will be the first one to park outside if I know my daughter's going to come and visit because of the parking situations and the mechanics shops. I'm sorry. So I need to know, besides the T parking pilot program that you have, which I understand that it's working out fine, the seven day parking limit is not being enforced because I will call, residents around me will call for 72 hour parking, not for each other, but for the mechanics that park there for seven days, move them and bring them back. They park from where I live at on Imperial and Pomona all the way to 118th and Gravilla. I've seen them, I know them. It has kept me busy for the past three years and it's been turned a blind eye to my plea. And I come speaking from a lot of residents and neighbors and homeowners. So with that being said, I need to ask you with parking enforcement, when I call them, I feel that they use their judgment towards, they don't, their own personal feeling and not towards justice. I'm not sure why they won't cite a car that I asked to request to be parked, that's parked there for three days, two days because I know it's going to be parked for three days. I call back and it's still not being cited. Somebody will call me with a concern and it's still not being followed up. That's one part. Then we have apartment management buildings that will say the rent is 1,200 and that's not counting the parking space. And that's not fair to the renters. Well, heck, if I can afford 1,200, now 100, I'll just park outside. They probably don't know the issue or the problem here in Hawthorne for parking. So now you have residents against residents. So in addition to this T parking that you're doing, I need to request if you can, like the good old days where you would cite a car when they were there and you'd come back. I know we don't tag them again, but if it can be enforced, if we ask for a 72 hour parking and to come cite it, if you see another car that's parked and it's double parked in the middle of the street or if it's blocking or if it's parked, cite that car too. That's to justice. Don't just go for the one call that I've made or the one call that's being made. And I jumped to a different scenario here, but they're not being consistent with the parking errors on the street. And it just, there's cars parked, blocking hydrant, hydrant, hydrants, fire hydrants on 134th always. Parking enforcement passes by, nothing's being done. So I just ask for a little bit more consistency and it'll help clean up our, our city. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, can you please follow up with our city manager? And Mr. City Manager, can we have something just a little bit more conclusive when it comes to these issues? Though that specific corner of Freeman and Imperial Highway is very problematic.
Yes, I'll work with the police chief to resolve this issue.
They get cited for working outside of their shop. Outside of their shop means anywhere outside of any awning that they might have and they're working open air. They can't be working open air. That's citable. I think, like I've said before, we can cite every day that they violate until they get the picture. And I have no problem if they shut down because they go out of business, but they're making life for the residents, they're uncomfortable. Okay? We have rules to follow and people need to follow the rules. Okay? So please, if you could just kind of come up with a plan that's very thorough and conclusive, please. And let, let us know too what it would be. Through a pink paper, please. Go ahead, sir.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, I've seen there's, like she says, but it's like Gravilla is a major drag, drag strip for commercial trucks, bringing cars over to the mall. They, they, when the traffic's backed up on El Segundo, oh well, let's go down Gravilla. Eight or nine o'clock at night, they're driving down, pulling their truck down here with car, car, truck is full of cars. And they, you know, and then we got the motorcycles that come doing racing their engines going down Gravilla. And we, and one other thing, I've asked the fire department several times, they stand by my back door and my neighbor's in the door, run their chainsaws at, at six in the morning. I've went out there several times to ask them to take that stuff down by the hotel. Don't sit here and disrespect your neighbors. Run it where we don't have to hear it. I don't mind them running, raising their, their ladders. It doesn't make as much noise as, as the chainsaws that they gotta run, make sure they're working. I'm getting tired of it five or six o'clock in the morning, the chainsaws are running. I've went out very nice and asked them to move that stuff to the hotel where there's nobody there. But no, it's like, I've asked the chief, the chief, it falls on deaf ears. They'll leave it for one day, next day it'll write back the same thing again. We need to do, to tell the fire department to not take their chainsaws somewhere else. That's not, you know, I'm not going to close my kitchen door because they, they want to run the chainsaws. It's getting ridiculous. I've asked them several times, eight attempts, and it just goes in one ear, out the other. You know, and we've got people not obeying the, the T, the T parking. I've, I know because I've gotten several of them. So, but we, we have cars that are sitting there day on, day, night after night, all they do, they just play musical chairs. They go from one side to the other, on one side to the other. They don't, they don't even live on that, on Gravilla. They live like four blocks down the street and they come over here and park their junk, junk cars on the street. They don't move, when it's street sweeping, they move it over in front of my place. On Tuesdays, they move it, move it to my side, they move it to the other side by the nursery. And then Wednesday, they move it back on the other side. You know, that's getting ridiculous. There's hardly any place to park because people live eight or nine blocks from us. They don't even live in the neighborhood. You know, they park everywhere. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Was there somebody else?
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask if-
Oral communications close ordered.
Only if the Alfred Muñoz, yeah, I know, he was, he's here. He just, he was late.
Okay.
And as a student and parents, you know, you guys free to leave anytime you like, okay? So if you want to stay, you can stay.
Hey, guys. So it's part of the group, right?
No Evo Costa, right?
Nope.
Thank you.
They were waiting for the, okay. They should have let us know earlier. I would have not gone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Clerk, your consent, consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on the consent calendar. There are items seven, eight, nine, 12, 13, 14, and 15 for your consideration and approval. Before we vote, there will be a brief presentation on item 15 by the finance director. I believe she's on her way up.
Okay, we're not going to wait for that. We'll wait till she comes back and we'll go back to that. Mr. Clerk, please read your items into the record, seven through nine, please.
Perfect. Item seven, approval of city council minutes for the regular meetings of September 14th, 2021, October 26th, 2021, and the special meeting of June 7th, 2022. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or orance on tonight's agenda. Item nine, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 12, resolution 8359, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting an appropriation spending limit for fiscal year 2022, 2023 in compliance with Article XIIB of the State of Constitution. Item 13, resolution number 8360, a resolution to the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 and setting Tuesday, June 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM as the time and date of a public hearing. Item 14, resolution number 8361, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy weed abatement assessments and setting a hearing date on June 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM for such proposed amendments.
Okay, sir, if you could, we could just vote on those because item 15 is related to this presentation. So I make a motion for all those items.
Second.
Second.
The second is given to Councilwoman Valentine. Go ahead and vote, please.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Ms. Lopez, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. Let me just pull this up. I'm not sure. Thank you again for allowing us to bring the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2223. The original presentation was on May 10th. It was posted in the paper and posted online and there are no changes from the original presentation for the general fund. There is only a, a difference in the restricted funds for grants that carry over into the new fiscal year. And we will start with the required cash balance for fiscal year 2223. So for fiscal year 2223, the required cash balance, which is an average of three months of operating expenditures is 22,134,458. The cash balance at the end of last fiscal year, June 30th, 2021, was 52,393,986. And at mid-year, which was December 2021, that cash balance was 57,905,088. Okay, and now we'll move into the account balances. At April 30th, the general cash balance at June, at April 30th was 12 million. The local area investment fund, which is our life fund, had a balance of 70,270,000. Multibank Securities, which is our investment fund, had $9 million. The commercial money market had 24.4 million. And the sweep account had 4, 4.1 million. So these cash balances as of April 30th were split into general fund cash and restricted cash. The general fund cash balance at April 30th was 78,620,000, while the restricted funds were at 41 million, 41.3 million. The anticipated revenue that is expected to be received before June 30th, oops. I'm sorry.
No, keep going, keep going.
The anticipated revenue to be received for June 30th, 2022 is 18.7 million. And the anticipated expenditures still to be posted are 21.8 million. So the anticipated general fund cash balance for June 30th at this point in time is 75.4 million. Council did authorize a purchase last week for about 11 million. So if that goes through before June 30th, then that balance will change. Otherwise, we should see a balance of about 75 million. Okay, so we have, I'm going to go through each of the department budgets. So if you have any questions, just stop me as I go. This is the same information that was presented on May 10th, but if there's something that you still need cleared up, then let me know. All right, so city council budget, there was an increase of about $30,000 from 145,000 to 175,000. That increase is 16,000 in salary and benefits and eight, 13.8, or 13,800 in contract services and travel and conference. For the non-departmental, we have an increase of 1.7 million from 12.8 million in 2122 to 14 point, almost 14.6 million in 2223. Personnel costs remain the same and these are for estimated employee payouts for anyone who might be retiring, terminated, et cetera. LA County Fire, there was a decrease in this non-departmental budget of 599,000. And the, the fire contract is split in non-departmental and Measure HH, so you'll see this on the, on the next slide. The debt service payments and sales tax rebates increased by 334,000. That budget is 3,300,000. Retiree health increased by 300,000. That's also 3.3 million. The operating expense increased by 1.7 million. And this includes contract services, emergency prep, emergency preparedness, centennial expenditures that are coming up here shortly for our 100 year anniversary, the city property management and ARPA program funds that are carrying over into the new fiscal year. Liability allocation remains at 1 million. So again, the increase in non-departmental is 1.7 million. Measure HH increased by 1.5 million from 12.4 million in 2122 to 13.9 million in 2223. LA County Fire contract increased for Measure HH from 8.7 million to 10 million. And that just, that increase is based on the amount of money, amount of sales tax revenue that is being received in 2223. So that increased from, from 12.4 million to 13.9 million. So that's why the fire contract is receiving more money from Measure HH. The South Bay Regional Public Communication, which is our 911 service, increased by 380,000. And our gang unit and school resource officers programs decreased by 150,000. So that increase again for Measure HH is 1.5 million. The city clerk budget increased by 209,000. The budget for 2223 will be 512,000. And these are all election costing. cost increases, increases, excuse me. For the city manager, there's a total increase of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. This increase includes about fifty-five thousand in personnel costs and a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in operating expenditures. This includes contract services, travel and conferences, and general expenditures. They added one admin employee, or that admin employee had been reassigned to finance. That employee is being brought back to the city manager's office, and there was an addition of a part-time office clerk. For city treasurer, there's an increase of thirty-one thousand dollars. About twenty-five thousand dollars of that is in contract services. For the city attorney's office, we have an increase, a total increase of four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. There was a decrease in personnel costs of a hundred and forty-four thousand and an increase in operating expenditures of five hundred and ninety thousand. This increase in costs was due to receiverships and attorneys' contract services being moved from the internal service fund over to the general fund, and this was just to align expenditures with the correct programs. And then we have our insurance reserve, which increased by one point nine million, and that was due to the increase in liability insurance. So the total increase for the city attorney program, including insurance reserve, is two point three million dollars. Okay, in finance, there was an increase of a hundred and forty-one, almost a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and this is due to an addition of one accountant's position, and this is for, because of the increasing reporting requirements for grants and audits. Okay, for business license, we have an increase of sixty-six thousand dollars, and that is, the majority of the increase is in personnel costs, and that is because there's an addition of three part-time office clerks to assist during the renewal season. They, they receive so much mail that they need, they need a part-time staff that can just open and get everything organized. Okay, for human resources, we have an increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and the majority of this increase is in operating expenditures, which is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. This was for contract services, which is some attorney's fees, testing expenditures, training, and educational reimbursements for staff. And there was an addition of a full-time position for an administrative clerk. For the police department, they've got quite a few programs. The increase in police general fund for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is two point one million dollars. For the I. T. Services, there's an increase of six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And then, of course, there's increases in Prop. A Transit Safety Program of two hundred thousand. Overall, their total budget, including grants, is two point two million dollars increase. Personnel costs increased by one point seven million. This was due to M. L. U.-approved increases in benefits, and the operating costs increased by five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This included liability insurance, building maintenance, ambulance services, utilities, and forensic testing. And there was a decrease in part-time staff of one person. For Public Works, of course, they've got more programs than any department. Their general fund increased by about a million dollars. Their street improvements increased by two million dollars. Overall, all of their programs increased by one, three point one million dollars. Personnel costs increased by one point four million, and this, again, was due to M. L. U. increases, but they also had eight additional employees added. This is for new grant reporting and deadlines. And operating expenditures increased by almost one point seven million dollars, and this is due to contract services increases, air conditioning maintenance, and repairs and maintenance. For planning, there's an increase in the general fund of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and two grants that were added of one point eight million dollars. So overall, their budget increased by two, almost two point two million dollars. Personnel costs actually decreased by twenty-eight thousand dollars. Planning grants increased by one point eight, and operating expenditures increased by four hundred thousand dollars. This is due mainly for contract services for housing element and cannabis processing. And they did add three part-time code enforcement positions, which was a request from council and, and city manager. For building and safety, we have an increase of a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Personnel costs increased by eighty-six thousand, and that was one additional full-time employee. And we have sixty-seven, almost sixty-eight thousand dollars in contract services increases, and this is for expediting plans and inspections. For community services, we have an increase in the general fund of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and park grants of four point eight million dollars, so an overall increase for their programs of five point two million dollars. And cable is now a part of community services. So there's, in your slides, there's a little bit of a difference on the personnel costs and operating costs because we missed adding that there. So the slide is correct with three, three million, two eighty-four for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and that increased to three million, two thirty-seven, which actually was a decrease of forty-six thousand dollars. And then operating expenses increased by four hundred and thirty-three thousand. In twenty twenty-one, it was one point nine million, and it increased to two point three million in twenty-two, twenty-three. And this was for homeless services, building maintenance, park maintenance, and tree trimming. And they added one full-time position and two part-time positions. For community development, which includes C. D. B. G. and home funds, these are both HUD funds, we have a decrease in C. D. B. G. programs of about eighty thousand dollars and a decrease in home funds of two hundred thousand dollars. So overall, their budget decreased by two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Personnel costs increased by six thousand, six hundred dollars. Personnel costs for the CARES Act, which is a funding that we received as a one-time allocation, so that increased by seventy-one thousand dollars. Operating expenditures decreased by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So again, the overall decrease in these two programs was two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. There were two temporary employees added, and those are the ones that are maintaining this CARES Act funding.
Can, to the chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question about that decrease in C. D. B. G. and home fund? That is because of the, the new census data?
That, I, it's just the, the allocation that they, they received, but I'm not sure exactly why there was a decrease. We could, we can have our housing manager send you a, an information on that.
All right, thank you.
One, a couple more pages. So. Our housing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
Oh, I accidentally flipped.
Okay. Our housing department, federal funds, which is HUD funding, increased by three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to twelve point nine million. The property budgets increased by about ninety thousand. So overall, that increase for the housing programs was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Personnel costs decreased by a hundred and ten thousand, and operating expenses increased by five hundred and seventy. Again, the total program increase is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. There is an additional full-time employee, and this is for a property manager for the properties. Okay, and this is just a summary of all of the department budgets I just went through. There is a total expenditure budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three of eighty-eight million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. It is an increase of nine point two million dollars. Grants and restricted funds increased by thirty-four million dollars to a hundred and seven point three. So our total expenditures for the city are a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty, a hundred and ninety-five million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. This is the general fund expenditure in graph form. This is by department and by category. As you can see, the police department makes up the majority of the expenditures for the general fund. It's forty-three percent at thirty-seven point nine million. Fire services are sixteen percent of the budget at thirteen point nine million. I. T. Services are at three percent. Public Works, Building and Safety, Community Services, and Planning are fifteen percent of the budget at thirteen million. Legislative and Administrative, which is all the service departments, are at seven percent at five point nine million, and non-departmental is fourteen point six million dollars, about sixteen percent of the budget. And by category, personnel is fifty percent of the general fund at forty-four million. Capital outlay is point four percent at three hundred and forty-five thousand. Operating transfers are four percent of the budget at three point three million. Interdepartmental charges are five percent of the budget at four point six million. Maintenance and operations are fifteen percent of the budget at thirteen point one million. Contract services is twenty-one percent of the general fund, and that's eighteen point seven million. Of that eighteen point seven, thirteen point nine million is for the fire contract, and three million is for our nine-one-one operations. And lastly, the retiree and health, retiree health and employee relations is five percent of the budget at four million dollars.
Through the chair, a quick question.
Yes.
Is there somewhere in this report that details the revenue, the tax revenue?
Tax revenue, yes, if you look at what was attached to the agenda item. There is a list of. It's about a thirty-four-page report, and it lists.
Specifically the sales tax. I know, you know, in the past, I like to.
Yeah, if you look at page, it's about probably page six or seven. It says page one of twenty-two, and it lists the property taxes, all of the local taxes, which includes sales tax, transient tax, franchise tax. If you look at that report. Is it one in particular? I'm sorry?
The twenty-two page?
Yeah, the one that says one of twenty-two.
And we're looking at which page? Specifically?
Yes, about page one through five should be all of the general fund information.
It starts at si, if you count six from the, from the top, count six, yeah, and then you'll find it. It says one of twenty-two.
Yeah, I see that.
Is there a particular line item you wanted to look at?
Do we have information about far as sales tax, like what industries? Or, you know, what are the drivers of the sales tax revenue?
Yes, I can forward that over to you. We had a study done about a year or so ago where it broke out the amounts or the percentages of sales tax that come from each of the different industries, and I can send that over to you.
So we had to do a special study to get that information? So that was at a additional cost that we had to do?
It's not an additional cost. It's every quarter, we review that with our consultant, and they, they put together this information for us every.
So do we have an updated one?
We should have an updated one, and we met with them a couple months ago, so I can, I can send you that information.
Oh, that'd be great, thanks.
So from the property tax path, pass-throughs, what is that number?
What do you mean of the?
Property pa, tax pass-throughs that go to the city from the state. So when people pay their property taxes, what is the, our accumulated value of, how much money do we get from the property taxes?
Six point six million dollars.
So just, we, we need to be careful that if, there is no economic benefit to any of these high, high-end, high-density residential units. So we need to be very careful.
Is, is that on, on this page one of two, of twenty-two?
Yes, if you look at the very first line, it says secured, current year secured is six point six million.
I just wanted to point that out to show everyone how it looks in the scheme of things.
Okay, got it. I see. I got you.
How it looks in the scheme of things, that's all.
But the property tax also include all the, the, the property, the single homes and the apartment buildings that.
Everything. Commercial and residential.
Any other questions, so we could move along?
Did you want me to go through the revenues or?
Revenues.
No, I mean, the, the total budget for revenues that we're proposing is eighty-eight point seven million, and the, the revenues for the entire city are one hundred and eighty-four point nine million dollars.
And as part of the revenues that we have, we have the, the ARPA funds, that's like a one-time.
Right, and so the ARPA funding, we currently, we received fifteen million in twenty-one, twenty-two. We are due to receive the second payout of that in July of another fifteen million dollars.
And then after the following year, we're not gonna have that.
Right.
What do you mean, is that ARPA money included in that eighty-eight million dollar number?
Yeah, yeah, no, not in the eighty-eight, in the overall grant and restricted funds.
Got it.
That's in there.
Got it.
Although there's a wide array of uses for it, you still have to include it there.
Correct.
And Felice, just remind us, the, the proposed expenditure, we, we, the estimated revenues. So if, if everything match, how much that we have leftovers, like cash balance?
So there was a surplus of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from what revenue we estimate will be coming in to the expenditures that we are proposing.
That's a number of things. Thank you. Oh, I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. It's, when you look at the Magic H. Fund, why is the school resource office decrease by, I believe by a hundred thousand, you said?
It's about a hundred and fifteen thousand. The school resource office, officer program reduced by about thirty-six thousand, and that just could mean that they, you know, there were operating expenditures that they, you know, were no longer charging to this particular program.
Okay, why we not decreasing the program?
No, we still have the program going.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number eighty-three sixty-two, Mr. City Clerk. Thank you, Felice.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving and adopting the annual budget for this fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three for adoption.
I make a motion. I'll, I'll give you the motion. I'll take the second.
All right.
Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, for item ten, there are no bids tonight. We have one public hearing on the agenda. Mr. City Clerk, please read it.
Yes, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the proposal of a charter and the content of the proposed charter. City Attorney Department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received. Recommended motion. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing on the matter of the proposal of a charter and the content of the proposed charter pursuant to California Government Code Section three, four, four, five, eight, B. Take public testimony regarding the same, close the public hearing, discuss the proposal of a charter and the content of the proposed charter, and direct scheduling of a second public hearing on the matter for July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
And, uh, we have Mr. David Snow from Richardson Gershon to conduct the public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings.
Public hearing, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Again, Dave Snow with Richardson Gershon. It's a pleasure to be, uh, here with you in person, uh, today. You'll recall that the council has met several times over the last several months in order to discuss the topic of a city charter that would ultimately be presented to the voters for approval. Um, this, as the city attorney mentioned, is the first of two required public hearings, and then after that, uh, the council would be able to vote, um, and direct that that be placed on the ballot. So, uh, in your packet this evening, you have a copy of the draft charter, uh, that contains the provisions that the council had discussed previously, and just highlighting those, um, it does reserve the maximum authority to the city over what are called municipal affairs, those things that cities have control over. Um, that would include land use, uh, matters in particular. Um, it would not cover matters of statewide concern, those are things that the court determines, um, that would be, uh, of statewide concern, some examples, uh, school systems, traffic and vehicle regulations, the Brown Act. Um, the, the proposed charter also provides that each member of the city council can nominate one member to each of the, uh, city's boards, committees, or commissions, um, and then that would be subject to approval by the majority of the council, uh, rather than the current system where all nominations are made by the mayor, subject to approval by the council. Um, in the event that a commission has more than five members, then the mayor appoints the balance, again, subject to approval by the city council. Um, it provides that, uh, there's a compensation for the city council members, uh, as set forth in the draft charter, and any future adjustments to that would have to go through the process of, uh, applicable to general law cities as established in the government code. Um, it memorializes and continues on the provisions of the city's existing, uh, codes that, uh, the city attorney is authorized to prosecute misdemeanor offenses arising, uh, upon violation of state laws, so that is memorialized. Um, and then there are also provisions that provide for continuity of the city's municipal rights obligations and operations, and to aid in the implementation, uh, of the charter. Again, this is the first of two required public hearings, and at this point, we'd look for, uh, feedback, comment from interested members of the public, as well as the city council. Can take any direction as far as, uh, the, the content of the draft charter, uh, and then we request that after that, the city council, uh, direct that this be set for the second hearing, uh, has to be at least thirty days after this evening, and so we suggest that that be set for, uh, July fourteenth, and notice be provided, uh, on that. Um, with that, if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer them, otherwise I think we'd be ready for public comment.
I'll open it to public comment. Anybody from the community, line up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amy Shepherd. I live in Monetta Gardens on one thirty-ninth Street. Um, I have some concerns. We just went through the budget, and we saw in black and white that the council is considered a part-time employees. However, when we review the charter, it looks as if you're trying to accept full-time salaries in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, one of the reasons that I take issue with this is that for over twenty years, this has been considered a public service job with a payment of six hundred dollars per month. That's been fine for the last twenty years, and you guys already doubled it this year. So this would be the second increase that you would be taking on your payment, and I just think, coming out of the global pandemic where we had a utility tax that we had to fight off, when we see we have a surplus of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I don't believe that that surplus would even cover the salaries. So I'm wondering tonight why we have salaries that are in excess of what we're spending on the homeless, which I see tonight is seventy-one thousand dollars. And then we also have the cannabis, which we're spending two hundred thousand dollars on. So it seemed like our priorities are a little bit confused, where we're spending more money on weed than we are on unhoused people. Our median income in the City of Hawthorne is in the mid-fifties, so that's what, on average, the residents are making for their full-time jobs, and you guys are asking that for a part-time job. Now, so, several of you, I think all of you, maybe one, does not, um, have full-time jobs, some of you for other municipalities, so I think there's some confusion on where the loyalties are and where your, your attention would be given during the day. If you're receiving a salary from a city like Carson or Los Angeles, how are you also receiving a salary from Hawthorne? Are we anticipating that you guys are working eighty hours a week and over that? So I think it's a little unfair for some of the people who are struggling with rent payments, um, payments of food. We have a city clerk who's been doing his food giveaways, um, so I think it's kind of a slap in the face for the people who are not earning a hundred and twenty K a year, like you're asking if you've got full-time jobs other places. Um, so I respectfully ask that you remove that part of the charter and maybe leave the rest. Land use, okay, we see it, we understand, uh, but I don't understand the salaries, so thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment is closed order. City council?
Mr. Mayor?
May I?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I have a question about the compensation, because, uh, you know, I was the only one. In the beginning, I was in favor of the charter city because of the, uh, zoning laws and land use, because the state has been passing too many laws that, uh, you know, interferes in our own city charters to, to regu, regulate our own zoning laws and land use. Question to, uh, Mr., I forgot your name, sorry.
Mr. Snow.
Snow, oh, yes, Mr. Snow. The compensation, if it's going to be like this on the ballot, I would like to see more detailed information, because when you look at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Develop, uh, that is proposed for a family of four, low-income limit for a family of four, and yesterday I looked at the, uh, the U.S. Department of Housing, low-income family of four in the city, in LA County, is ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars. And that is what it says that is going to be, the salary which shall be set at the low-income limit for a family of four, as set by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Develop of the year, including Los Angeles County in two thousand, twenty-one. And I have here, family of four, low-income, ninety-four thousand, six hundred. Then, so if that's going to go on the ballot, I want that number there. I just don't want just the, uh, li, you know, low-income limit of family of four. I want that ninety-four thousand, six hundred. So the people of Hawthorne will understand that some of my colleagues are asking for compensation of ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars a year. Plus, when you tabulate the benefit that we receive, medical, it's about twenty-eight thousand a year. So the total compensation that is being proposed will come to one hundred, twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And some of my colleagues, I know they work full-time jobs, but they only come to the city council maybe for the two meetings. I don't think even they work twelve hours a month to justify the salary of ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So if that, if this cha, proposed charter goes on the ballot, I want those numbers very clear on that section two, zero, one compensation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have nothing.
All right, any other comments? Okay, I move that we take, uh, city staff's recommendation for setting the next meeting?
Second.
Okay, so we can get, uh, more community feedback? Okay, thank you. Please vote.
A public hearing, right? Second hearing?
So it would be...
Yeah, it's, it's, I bet, motion and second.
Mr. Snow, is this something that the council will vote today?
Uh, it was as, it was as a voting item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the council could take a, a vote on that, or it could just be direction to set the hearing at the next, uh, the next meeting.
Well, I provide direction. Just would provide direction.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any, uh, that there's sufficient support for that.
We will issue notice and set the next hearing for July fourteenth.
So we could get feedback from the community. Thank you. Uh, we have, there are no bids on tonight's agenda, uh, but we have, uh, so I already mentioned that, um, there are no ordinances on tonight's agenda, and there are no general matters on tonight's agenda. Uh, Mr. City Manager, you have about five items.
Can you go ahead and read them?
Um, the city manager, okay, um, you're, you had requested that you would read them, right? Okay, let's, let's stick to your...
My support of the city manager.
Okay, go ahead, sir. That's right.
Item twenty-three, additional funding requests for South Bay Regional Public Communication Authority, and the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the current fiscal year. Item twenty-two, agreement between City of Hawthorne and Associated Soils Engineering, Inc., to provide quality-controlled testing services and approval of a blanket purchase order in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars annually. Item twenty-three, agreement between City of Hawthorne and Curry Engineering and Testing, Inc., to provide quality assurance, testing services, and approval of a blanket purchase order in the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred and thirty dollars annually. Item twenty-four, approval of a blanket purchase order, BPO, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the implementation of a cannabis program to EGMA planning and development for the current fiscal year. Item twenty-five, approval of United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Program allocation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items twenty-one through twenty-five?
I move.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, please vote. We have a, we have a quorum.
And I want to congratulate, uh, the city clerks, Mr. Dr. Paul Jimenez, for the seventy-one thousand dollar grant that you received from the, uh, United Way. Thank you for your staff.
Thank you.
The vote reflects mayor and city council members voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney's consent calendar? Go ahead, Mr. City Clerk, can you please read that for him, too?
Item twenty-seven, deny claim for breach of contract by Municipal Auditing Services, LLC. Item twenty-eight, deny claim and, of David Peter Qualco for alleged interference with contractual relations and economic advantage, breach of contract, and defamation. Item twenty-nine, deny claim of Jason Ganda Minko for alleged civil rights violations. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items twenty-seven through twenty-nine?
I make a motion.
Second.
Uh, I am moved, and it's been seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects, uh, mayor and mayor pro temp, yeah, with, um, responding yes, and councilor Montero responding.
No, 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 that's my wrong button.
I think you were thinking about another item, maybe.
You'd like me to reset?
Yes, reset, please.
Mr. Kim, is it okay if I do that?
Uh, yeah, I think we're...
It's a, no, it's a yes vote, but I pu, I pressed the wrong button.
I'm gonna go ahead and reset it.
Yes, that's fine.
There's, there's no, everything's legal.
No, it's still a consent calendar, you, even if two to one, you wouldn't...
I know, we're still within that item.
Please vote, yeah.
But we can't do, use it as a purp, for the purpose of changing because you saw other people also, but yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
All right. Uh, let me see, let's be, okay. We have a discussion per council member Valentine's, item number thirty-one, on Assembly Bill twenty-eleven. Staff has no recommendation. Do you have a description of this? At least you can get us moving on this, Mr. City Attorney?
Um, you should have a, you should have a staff report on this.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Number thirty-one is...
What direction would the city like to take, council members that are here?
I believe we should oppose that, because it is ve, it is another thing that the state is trying to oppose into the municipals, you know?
I can, uh, just make it a brief summary of this. It's A, A, B, uh, two-eleven, which is now with the, it's on the, with the state senate. It basically would, uh, require cities to ministerially approve without condition and discretion, uh, certain affordable housing and mixed-use housing development in zones where it's typically commercial or parking, uh, type of use, with, regardless of what the, uh, general plan or specific plan or the zoning ordinance would say. Basically, it's another, um, bill from the state legislatures to override the city discretion and, for the purpose of increasing affordable housing.
Who's the author of this? Was this, uh, the outsider, Scott Weiner?
It's, uh, Buffy Wick, she's a Democrat from City of Oakland, she's an assembly member.
Let me ask a question. If we're, uh, were a charter city, will we submit to the same bill?
That's a good question.
There is a, and Mr. Snow can correct me if he's still here? Okay, well, there's a, the state case law is that any, the housing shortage that's being experienced in the state of California is a matter of statewide concern. So that would apply to both, if they stay consistent with that holding, um, it would apply regardless of whether you're a general law city or charter city.
Except that...
So the general, the, the, the charter city will sue the state to stop this bill, but we, because we are general law, we cannot sue the state?
Got it.
Well, it's similar to SB nine that's being challenged by some of the charter cities. The grounds for the challenge is mainly dealing with, is it narrowly tailored? Uh, so it is, housing shortage is a statewide, um, state affair, but is it narrowly specifically tailored to, um, to limit the power that the state is using over the cities?
So what it means, so what it means is that we have some commercial land that we were hoping to develop to have some money-making, revenue-making types of, uh, endeavors, industries, and businesses, and maybe some shopping malls, restaurants, and the state government could just say that we want that land for housing.
Including parking, including parking areas.
Including parking, no revenue, no revenue to the city, just a little pittance of property tax.
That's one of the bills that I have, have on tonight that we're going to be talking about.
Oh, that's the, we are talking about it.
We're talking about it, you're staying.
You just walked in, we've started, we started with that.
We already began speaking about it.
We just wanted to start talking about it. Do you want to make a motion to oppose it?
Yes, I move that we oppose, that it's, uh, A, B, is it A, B, twenty-eleven?
I'll second it.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's very, it's very disappointing that these types of SB nine, ten, and twenty-eleven are, uh, brought forth by these, uh, people who move into our cities, uh, with these radical weird ideas and have no clue as to what the types of issues cities like ours run into, so...
And it makes, it makes what we're already doing totally meaningless. Why, why would we be do, be doing arena and, and, and doing housing elements if they can just come in and say, "We're going to use your, your commercial, uh, your commercial, uh, areas for housing." It, it makes, it makes what we're doing with our, with our planning departments totally meaningless.
We're trying to get ahead of the, uh, parking situation, but we have reckless developers, uh, trying to build just without, with minimal, like, one and point one-five parking spaces type of situation, so it's like really weird ideas, but okay, enough of that. Um, Mayor Pro Temp Patterson, you have item two, three, two?
Um, yeah, number thirty-two, um, I understand the city attorney has some information on this subject, uh, landlord-tenant dispute mediation program?
Uh, yes, um, Mayor Pro Temp Patterson, um, at the last meeting, you directed the city attorney to look into the landlord-tenant dispute mediation program for other cities, and that's what I did, I looked into several cities, um, so...
Is your mic on?
It is.
Okay.
You know what, let me take my mask off.
It's because these things are bolted...
Is this a little better?
Yeah, much better.
You need to unbolt these, okay?
So in the staff report or on the agenda bill, I list, um, all the cities that I've looked into, um, Manhattan B... Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, I'll start with the neighboring cities. They refer to a South Bay Center for Dispute Resolution. However, I looked into South Bay Center Dispute Resolution, and that, um, source does not exist anymore. So, um, if you look at most of the South Bay cities, Torrance, Rancho Palos Verdes, Rolling Hills Estate, and Laguna Beach, which is in Orange County, City of Beverly Hills, and Redondo Beach is now moving towards an agency called Choice Mediation. Um, I contacted the, uh, the Choice Mediation and, uh, just to get a ballpark figure of how much they would charge, uh, for referrals. And the, uh, the mediation program is, uh, conducted by an attorney, and her rates for cities are one hundred sixty dollars an hour. And if it's a program for cities where the parties of the dispute would pay for it, then she says she would, has another type of, um, billing program. But, um, in terms of the cities, if, if the council were too interested in pursuing this, then it would be a hundred six dot per hour. Um, there is a, a free mediation program offered in the, uh, Los Angeles County under, by, under Consumer and Business Affairs. This is a free program that where they offer mediation. Um, City of Camarillo, I, I put in additional cities that were a little different. City of Camarillo by ordinance provi- provides for voluntary non-binding, non-binding mediation. And the city maintains a list of mediator who are then randomly selected for their, for their case.
How much do they pay for that?
Um, I, I don't know exactly how much they ch- pay for that, because they have a list of mediators. It, it could be different amount depending on the mediators. Um, City of Culver City was very different in that they, they have a by ordinance, a mandatory mediation program for landlord tenants. Um, and it's by through their, the pos- specific policies are in their bylaws for their landlord tenant mediation board. Um, so the, the way they make this mandatory is that by ordinance, all rental agreements has to contain a provision that agrees to a mandatory mediation provision. And that's kind of unique, so I put that in there is City of Culver City. Then I added something that I thought was a little bit also interesting, and City of Santa Barbara, is that they offer voluntary mediation services offered through a board mediators, board of mediators that's made up of fifteen members. It's of five landlords, five tenants, and five homeowners. Now, I, I think the City of Santa Barbara is a much bigger city, and they can provide services like that. Um, but I don't have a specific recommendation. I, I could discourage city council if interested moving into anything that's mandatory, such as Culver City. Um, we kind of want to stray away from that in, in terms of potential involvement in potential civil disputes between private parties. Um, so if I had to make a recommendation, I, you know, I would take, um, I, I would recommend that we look further into the Choice Mediation, which is, um, another mediator providing services for people having this kind of dispute. And that seems to be, um, kind of a popular thing with most of the South Bay cities.
Yeah, definitely get some more information about that. I'm curious how, um, disputes would get referred to them, like what that process would look like.
I'll find out more information about that.
There are, there are so many, many mediation services, though. I would encourage you to look for, um, mediation services at a very low cost or, or even free, because, um, there are so many agencies that actually do that kind of work. I mean, I'm thinking about the American Arbitration Association. They have a mediation program, too. Um, I don't know what kind of cases. I don't know whether they would take landlord tenant. That I do not know, but, um-
I mean, yeah.
They, there, it, it would be an agency that actually screens mediators and actually, um, uh, you know, had, allows the parties to choose their own mediators, you know, each, each party, uh, you know, they, they give the parties the option of which mediator to choose. But they're, they're low cost, so I, I would encourage us to do something like that.
Also, the, uh, again, the LA County Consumers and Business Affairs Department offers free mediation for, uh, LA County residents, so that's, we don't necessarily have to do that, but that's, um, you know, it's for council to discuss and give further direction to staff.
Yeah, something, a little bit more. I mean, so I, I think there's some great options, and definitely want to get more information about Choice Mediation and even explore some of these other options. And the other question still would be, you know, how cases would get referred over there, you know, what type of, if any type of, um, organization or commission or, or, or body that we would have within the City of Hawthorne that would, you know, deem that necessary next step.
Alright, okay. So I just wanted just to point out a couple of things. Consideration is cost. Is it free? Do we have to pay for it? And I would really just warn our, my council members that we need to be really careful that we don't tack this on as another management thing that our housing department has to do. They have to take advantage of the section eight housing, uh, the section eight voucher program, um, the money that's been coming in to relieve people with regards to rental relief, right? And other, managing our current buildings that we, uh, own for rental, you know, for rentals from the city, and other programs that they're already like, uh, managing. That's with the small task force and, uh, a small group of people, so um, what we do have is like the rental of the housing, uh, the Right Center. We have other, uh, resources that we're already referring to people. So if it's a matter of finding something free that we can refer people, that they can call and see if that's something that they can resolve, uh, with, uh, you know, with, with their landlord through that mediation, I think so. If we can write something in for moving forward, because we, we can't do it retroactive where it's part of a rental agreement using Santa Barbara's model, it's good. Okay, they might not do that. We'll have the apartment association maybe oppose it, but fine. But then I also want to remind our, uh, my city council colleagues that the City of Hawthorne has about seventy percent, uh, households that are renters, so. Ho- Culver City doesn't have nearly that amount. Santa Barbara doesn't have nearly that amount. City, I just looked up, City of Los Angeles has less renters than we do, have fifty-five percent of their households, so seventy percent here in the City of Hawthorne, fifty-five percent in the City of Los Angeles. Doesn't mean I wa- I don't want to collect these resources for, we should collect these resources for the community and compile them, have them ready. I just think we need to be careful how we, uh, uh, load our, uh, our housing department. I think we need to look at it carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you're right, you're right to the point, because, uh, like Mr. Kim said, it, it is a private issues between the tenants and the landlord. Uh, when we start to meddle into that, so then we become liable. So I would, you know, even when we're talking about the choice mediation at a hundred sixty dollars per hour, then we would have to ask the housing department, can the HUD pay for, for that service, you know, for us to have it? You know, we would have to ask that question, because I would not see this money coming out of our general fund to pay for a service that, yeah, it might help the tenants, it might help the landlord, but we are not in the business of try to mediation, to mediate the housing issues between the tenants' issues. But if we can find free service, like Mr. Mayor said, then we could just refer them to, like you said, the Housing Rights Center, the Legal Aid Foundation. Um, if, like Ms. Valentine said, the American Mediation Association, so maybe we can find some free serve that we can have in our disposal that we can refer them to those services. But to pay for it, I think we open a big camera worm that we don't want to get involved in.
So there's just one last thing to say, uh, kind of responsive what's been said already. Um, I think it is important to be concerned about cost, a hundred percent, right? But the, the reason why this conversation was initiated was because I wanted to make sure that City of Hawthorne had some type of, um, resources for our community that had teeth. And we currently do refer to Housing Rights Center, and from the information I've gotten from residents in the city, that's, that's insufficient. And I don't believe that we also have enough, uh, even support for landlords that might be being taken advantage of, um, by people gaming the system. But be honest with you, my interest is more towards our residents that are living in, in poor living conditions, being taken advantage of by certain landlords and things like that. So I, I, um, definitely, I'm not looking to rush into anything or, you know, do this without thinking it through, but, uh, regardless of if there may be some cost or no cost, all that stuff, you know, from my position, everybody has a right to have their own position, i- is, is not as much of my concern. My concern is making sure that we have some type of support for our, our residents. As you can see by this list, most of the cities in our area takes it a lot more seriously than we do. And so we need to take it a lot more seriously than we're currently taking it. So we need to figure out something.
Through the chair? So, um, I've had a lot of my college students, their families, um, they'll actually, I've referred them to the Loyola Center for Conflict Resolution, which, which is through the Loyola Law School. Um, and they speak diff- not just Spanish and English, but other languages. Uh, it's a hundred percent free unless you, you know, if you could afford it, they'll charge you on a sliding scale, but, um, they don't, you know, for anyone that can afford it, it's a hundred percent free. Um, and again, I could testify, it's actually really helped out a lot of my college students and, and their families, so, um, I just sent you the information, Mr. Kim.
One of the things that I also kind of wondered from our last conversation that I want to remind everybody is that, um, I've, I've seen some of these issues through or observed how they go through, and I get a call, my landlord's doing this, and I can't believe, this is, you wouldn't know where I'm going with this, right? This is falling apart, the plumbing, I can't believe he put a wall in between my, to divide up and create more rooms and all this other stuff, blah, blah, blah. And come to find that at the end of the whole thing, they're upset that they raised the rent, as they were rightfully allowed to do so, though, the allotted amount of percentage, so. Uh, sometimes we do have to be careful. That's why we enter into a, a situation where it could be the landlord that's just doing what they, or have the right to do. It could be the, um, what you call it, the residents who have, uh, you know, who are making sense. So I, I think it's, uh, I, I received an idea from one of our commissioners of, of, like, about a few months back with regards to the same idea with regards to, uh, what, what could we do with regards to maybe a commission here in the city? Um, and so I appreciate her mentioning that, so it's good that we're actually doing something about it. Um, and, yeah, and she, she had a, a good situation that was worthy of being taken, undertaken by one of these, uh, conflict resolution. But then there's other people that are just, you know, what about those landlords that can't get somebody that's trashing up their place? I mean, are we ready to take that side on? It's like just hard, it's just, I, I think maybe we should look into it more and see how much we can do.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Mayor, you, you, you completely right, because I can give you some scenarios there, that you would be, uh, astonished. But this is an issue that, believe it or not, is going, is going out since two thousand one. Uh, when Monita Garden was created to deal with issues from Monita Gardens, right? So one of the issues was the tenants and the landlords that, you know, the slum landlords. And, and what we could do, it was refer them to the, you know, uh, Housing Rights Center, the Legal Aid Foundation. We brought the Housing Rights Center right to the Monita Gardens office in, 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 over there to, to work with these families. Uh, we called the Health Department, make referrals to the Health Department, because they're the one who was supposed to go check these issues of, uh, you know, slumlord. But let me give you an example about the landlords, right? Just imagine that the state of California gave some of the tenants rental assistance, thousands of dollars. And imagine this scenario, the tenant only gave the landlord half of the money. And then the landlord just find out through the state of California that this person received thousands of dollars, but didn't give the landlord the money. But because the state and the county have a moratorium on eviction, you cannot evict that person yet. But she failed to give the money that she received from the state of California for the rental assistance.
What do you do in that case?
That's need for some type of support for both our landlords.
Imagine that?
That are being taken, being gained by the system as well as our tenants that are being taken advantage of.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, it, it is puzzle, you know, how can we come up with a program that's going to be fair to the both sides?
Uh, I guess I, what, what I want to say is that that is a very specialized type of situation to be able to eve- uh, to be able to manage some type of, uh, what do we, what do we call it, mediation type of system?
And Ms. Valentine can tell you that.
It's, it's, it's very specialized, and I really don't think we could, it has to have its own special qualifications. And I'm not saying that our staff can do it, but I think they would have to, they couldn't attempt to see it to the level that like somebody who's trained specifically in that would be able to manage that, some type of program. So that's kind of why I returned to, let's try to find the resources and compile them and try to refer people as opposed to maybe, you know, but look, I'm not trying to, I don't, I don't know what it looks like, I just, we need to do more research, that's all.
Yeah, it's true, because look.
Saying no.
Uh, even South Bay, where once upon a time used to do conflict resolution training. And I, and I did attend some, uh, those things like back in two thousand.
Centennial Youth Services still does.
Yeah.
They still do.
So, so they have some, some type, if, if you would have the staff or maybe some volunteers, like, uh, you know, Dr. Paul Jimenez said, you know, some of the college, uh, we can partner with, I mean, some of the law schools around the area that maybe can provide some interns that could do mediation. You know what I mean? So something to explore.
And if we have issues with the landlords, if it's true that they're like not taking care of their plumbing, if it's true that it's like a damn pigsty that they're creating in their parking structures or in their, I think walls are falling apart, there's mold, et cetera. That's why we have our city attorney. I think we need to go to, that's where we can come in and go towards receivership on some of these things. We could take full legal action against these people if that is the case.
Well, I mean, that's a super extreme action.
Oh, no, I think, I think, it is, but I'm just saying, there's some people who are slumlords here in the City of Hawthorne. There are some slumlords.
Yeah, they are, they are some slumlord.
That's the bottom line. I mean, look, uh, these are little, we pick up these little issues, but they're slumlords.
We got to make sure there's some things in place from beginning to receivership. Obviously, we can't, legally, we can't just jump to receivership.
We're not jumping.
We got to have mediation, right? We got to have-
We would have to create resolution, for example. One, one thing that we can, can think about it.
Well, this is all the value of our, our code enforcement as well, why it's such a, such an important department.
One thing probably maybe we can think about it, Mr. Kim, is if we can keep a list of these, uh, addresses that people complain about the slumlords, right? Because every year landlords have to renew their permit, the licensing.
So, that's a great point.
So maybe something that if we can keep a list of these complaints, and then when these addresses show up for renewal of their permit, then we could deny or say you have to fix something before we give you this licensing.
Now, um, I, I, I do want to add some clarification.
You're not up, what are you trying to say?
Create a resolution.
You're not up for the task? You're not up for the task? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I'm trying to say that the, the county actually has the jurisdiction of investigating slumlord situation with the county health department. It's not the code, code, it's not the city code enforcement. City code department basically handles the outside structure and things of that nature, and, and it's the living conditions are handled by the county health department.
Yeah, you, you did let us know that before. We, we obviously forgot already. You, you did tell us that already, right? The question is though, what, what do we do, given the fact that our county may not act, uh, as quickly as we need them to?
Yeah, so see, one of the things that, uh, I think that people don't know is, for example, every year you have to have a fire, a fire inspection, make sure that all the fire things are working, you know, the sprinkles, whatever. So every year they have to give you a permit to put on the building. The city give a permit to put on the city. So the health department, sometimes, you know, they, they should come and, and, and see, okay, the, did this pe- this, the landlord did the health, the inspection of the fire system. Even sometimes, you know, the, the, the fire system, they will identify some electric problem on the building, right? They'll say you have to fix this, or we're not giving you this, uh, permit to put on your building. So those are the kind of things that the health department, I think the LA County is failing to monit- So those are the kind of things that the health department, I think the LA County is failing to monitoring these systems. And I think maybe we need to talk to our supervisors to, to see if the health department can become more active.
It just, it just seems that.
Support a letter. I will support a letter and do that.
Absolutely. And I just, I just suspect that the county has, doesn't have the manpower to do it.
That's a problem, yeah.
That's where the limiting factor is.
Yes.
They have the jurisdiction, but they, you know, remember, look, look, look how much of a problem they had, the county health department had, going after some of these places that were open during the pandemic. How many times were I got messages about that uh?
Iliga Maduana shop?
The gym over here.
Oh.
Do you have direction then, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager?
Kind of going off the rails here. Clarification, I, I'm gonna, what I, the direction I got is that um I'm gonna do a further study and evaluation of different options that the city may have in terms of the mediation for landlord tenant dispute.
And free ones.
In terms of nuisance abatement type of action, receivership, that's what receivership entails. That's a topic because we're going into county laws and regulations. I prefer, and especially because that involves litigation, I prefer not to discuss that in a public council meeting.
How about um just uh, oh, that's right, I got you.
Put that on the next agenda as a private.
Close session if you can, or a pink paper.
Um, I, I can do some type of a, a legal confidential on that for a potential nuisance, but nuisance abatement, public nuisance abatement action has to be something that's very specific in terms of the facts of the case. So to do it just generally is um, it's not a, an easy task, I guess. I could just give a general um legal steps involved in nuisance abatement action, which would involve a violation of county of regulations and laws.
Do what you can within the limits, man. Protect us.
I mean, I, I could come back with the um, with the staff report on other uh re-, my research on other type of mediation service. Not the June twenty eighth meeting, but the meeting following that, the first meeting of July.
And I heard something about a letter that we could possibly write too?
Oh yeah, maybe we can uh write a letter to our county supervisor, um kind of informing her of the challenges that we're, we're facing or that our community is facing and maybe you know, request some, some attention to, to that department.
Okay, so thank you, council members. Mister uh.
Good discussion.
Mister Mayor Protem Patterson, you have a security plan during council meetings, thirty-three?
Oh yeah, just uh, just wanted to bring up just a question if we want to do anything different as far as security during council meetings, given the fact that there's been some um violence, you know, throughout the country over the last number of weeks. Um, I know different organizations, um other municipalities, schools have made some adjustments to uh their security. I just wanted to bring that up and see if, you know, do we want to do anything different? Uh somebody suggested maybe having a metal detector um that we utilize during council meetings. I don't know if we want to do that at City Hall in general. Um but just wanted to bring up the, the topic and see if anybody had any, any ideas or any comments on the subject.
Uh beyond our Sergeant at Arms Santos, who I think is doing a great job, let's give it up for him.
Maybe I've had everybody down now.
That's, we gotta give him instructions. No, I mean, but like.
I don't have a specific recommendation, I just wanted to bring up the question.
I think we have to be mindful and I think that it's something we need to talk about and think about. So I guess this is a good start. Um I would certainly, I, I certainly would be in favor of um checking bags at the, uh outside to see if anyone's ca-, is carrying a weapon. I would be with in favor of that.
One thing that my council colleagues might not know is that uh Hawthorne based business, uh UDT Sensors, uh which also owns Rapid Scan, um is based out of here, the city of Hawthorne, this is like its headquarters. And their uh, their metal detector, their, you know, those little airport security systems, if you go to the airport, you're gonna see Rapid Scan designed here in Hawthorne and built in Torrance.
Okay.
This could be an opportunity for us to talk to them and say, hey, we're, we host you in the city. You know, what do you, what do you think about maybe some equipment for the city? I mean, we could maybe negotiate or something.
Or discount rate.
No, seriously, seriously, just like we got these chairs through special deal with the people from nine to five.
Well, they're going to, they're going to charge us. I'm talking about having a, setting up a system outside.
I mean, we can secure our own.
We can secure our own metal detector and, and have our, our uh police officer, our, our, you know.
Beyond, so you don't want to like a walk-through system?
Let me put you on the stand.
Metal detector, I, I don't know if we.
Come on, chief. That's here, I'm the chief.
I think we might have one somewhere.
Okay.
You have what?
I think we might have a metal detector somewhere.
Okay, chief, give us two cents on this one.
How do you feel the security is? Are we safe?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Rather than give an answer now, I think I'd like to uh take this under review with the city attorney's office. Also, the city manager come up with a uh, some options that we can do. Uh mindful that, you know, whenever we put some of these processes in place that we have to have manpower issues, uh we have to monitor that, um where we're gonna put it, all these things. And um, you know, it's always a, it's an issue, we're always monitoring things come up and if, if there are potential safety issues, uh right now we are planning accordingly, bringing more officers, escorting council members to their vehicles, et cetera. So uh we do have that flexibility, but uh if you, if, if, if we can, we'd like to come back to you with a recommendation or report.
All right, thank you, chief.
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
You can't never say never. We, we never would have thought that we would be seeing some of the things that were, started happening in the last two months.
Nineteen children dead.
Yeah, and Buffalo and I think in Colorado and all these other different things.
Again, mental health. I go back to mental health. That's.
It goes hand in hand.
Primary, that is a huge problem in this country.
I agree with you.
Mental health and drugs, huge problem.
I agree.
I mean, we have people that could just do something with a knife, like hanging around in their kitchen and go out and do something crazy too. So if, if their minds are not uh healthy, right? Okay. So we have to consider all of the things that go into the whole problem and address everything. Councilmember Valentine, do you have something else?
A couple more things, actually. Um, yeah, the, the um, the selection of the voting delegate to the League of California Cities, the annual conference on September fifth through seventh, so I'm requesting to be the voting delegate. And of, and there, there, there has to be a, a voting delegate, an alternate and a second. And so um I'm, I would like to be the, be the delegate.
Anybody want to be the alternate for that?
I can be the alternate.
Anybody would like to be the second alternate? We'll just put down whoever's here, just on paper. Voting, voting delegate, alternate, second alternate.
Okay.
I'm sure Angie would probably want to be.
Well.
Cause, cause who is the, who is the right now the?
Oh, we already have delegates for this one?
Right.
You have to do it every year.
Last year, it was Councilwoman English, uh Mayor Protem Patterson, and I believe
For this specific event.
The second alternate was Councilmember Montero.
But we didn't set that at the beginning of the year? We didn't, we didn't read?
No, this is not, we did not do that at, you know, we have that list of all the different appointments and this is one of them that we did not have.
Okay, okay, so uh the voting delegate would be, by my nomination would be voting delegate for uh Councilmember Valentine, uh alternate for Mayor Protem Patterson and uh the second alternate for
English.
Councilwoman, Rayce English.
I mean.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Motion, I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, please vote. I made a motion, a second of Montero. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Second item, Councilwoman?
Yes, um so my second item is to request that um we support the request from uh of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments for funding from the state for five million dollars. Now, this will not cost us anything, but the state has a one hundred billion dollar budget surplus and the COG has so many programs that are unfunded. So the COG wants to um, you know, the, the COG wants to see if we can get the state to allocate um five billion, uh five million from that one hundred billion for, for some of our programs. So um this letter was sent by the South Bay Cities COG to several state representatives asking for state funding uh for five million dollars to create a South Bay Center for Sustainable and Renewable Ne- Neighborhoods. The money would be used to implement various programs and projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions as well as develop partnerships to leverage state funding. So some of the programs that they're asking to fund would be a municipal rooftop solar generation and electric storage system. Uh that would be one, two, implementing a local use vehicle ecosystem, providing an option for zero emission of mobility through the local travel network, which they presented here to the council, showing the public how to transition from internal combustion engine vehicles to EV electric vehicle modes. Third, implementing a pilot of the COG strategy, strategy to develop a digital hub, establishing neighborhood business districts centered around a public facility dedicated to providing high-speed internet access combined with technology and training. This would expand the South, the COG's South Bay Fiber Network, which we're, we're already a part of, and it would expand it to commercial areas and additional public facilities. And the fourth one would be to develop regional organic, uh regional waste projects. The COG will build on its proven history of success in the region in the areas of mobility, technology, water and energy efficiency with seed funding from the state. So um that is the request. Um the letter has already gone out and they, they want to get the cities to back them and say, yes, would you please um give the COG this money for these programs?
So I. I made a motion.
Second, thank you.
Motion, who has the second? Motion and second, please vote. Sounds good.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
So I'd like to ask um uh the uh city attorney if you would please um send out um the uh, the, the requests right away to the state based on what we did tonight, the opposition to AB twenty eleven and the support for this letter to get that go, so that can go out immediately, because the state is moving on these things. Some of these things are already in um committees and getting ready to be passed out and we'd like to get um, get the, get our word, get our, our name before them so they know that we're, we're supporting the more opposing them before the, uh before the term is up.
Thank you, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, member colleagues. So I just wanna just mention that uh the city council meeting today has uh, has all members present with the exception of our city treasurer Gregory Fallon, who's been excused, and Councilwoman uh Angie Rayce English, who has also been excused. So we'll start off with our city clerk. And Mr. City Clerk, congratulations on getting that funding. That was just uh awesome uh, the gift that came out of the sky that you, but, no, it didn't come out of the sky, you did your work to be able to do it, but for us, it's like, wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, no, and I actually wanted to start with that to thank all of you for, you know, supporting that. Um our goal is with that funding from the United Way is to actually get the, those funds into the community's hands. Uh so I also want to thank Felice, uh our finance director, because she's helping us to figure that out. But we want to make sure that that, those funds are provided to our community. So thank you for your support on that. Um and I also want to thank our intern, because she was, she took the lead on writing the grant. I think that, you know, being an intern, the idea is to be, to have a learning experience. Uh she said she wanted to learn how to write a grant, so we helped her with that and she got her first grant. Uh she's in her early twenties, so um it's a great learning experience. Hopefully she'll be doing these kinds of things in her future. She wants to be a futi-, uh a future city manager, so uh she'll be talking to you in the near future.
Okay, Juan.
Um, I also want to, I also want, yeah, don't scare off with any stories. I want to thank everyone um who came out to vote for the recent election. Uh the feedback we received from the voters was positive. Um I voted at the Flex uh Voting Center in Holly Park, um so I want to commend the poll workers uh for making a smooth process. Um I also want to thank the over thirty community members who signed up for our centennial celebration taking place in July. Uh it's great just to see how many neighbors want to be part of that process. So um, yeah, so thank you to again, over thirty neighbors who are gonna be helping out with that. Um on June fourth, we provided produce to over four, six hundred families. Um I also want to thank the carpenters, local union, because they provided us N ninety-five masks as well. Um unfortunately, due to the Juneteenth holiday, we won't be receiving a delivery this Friday. Uh therefore, our next produce giveaway won't be until um July second. Um and I think that's all on my end, so um, but yeah, have a great night.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank Felice and the staff for the excellent budget report and um and the organization of the budget and presenting it to us on time. Um it, it just gets better and better. Um I can't thank you enough, Felice, for uh, for making sure that we're sufficiently informed and that we're prepared to vote for the budget on time. And I want to thank the uh city manager also for taking the lead and making sure all of this was done on time. So Juneteenth uh day is going to be celebrated um as a national holiday. And June eighteenth, the city of Hawthorne is celebrating Juneteenth Day. Um one hundred and fifty-seven years after the first Juneteenth Day. Um and um I just want to say that uh congratulations to the city manager and the uh community development, community development department uh and all of the staff that worked on this to make this a, a very special day. And also to the Holly Park Homeowners Association and Parkside Village Homeowners Association for working to um, to make this a great community event on Saturday. They, it's going to be, I think, eleven to three, I believe those are the hours, am I correct?
Eleven to three, yes.
Eleven to three, and um there's going to be um, uh there'll be food, there'll be music and um it's going to be um, be very special and a little bit of history that'll be in and, and I, I assume my colleagues will all be there to um, to greet everyone. And so um thank you again to the, to the community. I expect to see the community out on Saturday for Juneteenth Day and um that's all I have. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh again, a good meeting. Uh thank you for the public to come in to give us your opinion and concern, so appreciate that. Definitely, you know, that gentleman that talked about the homeless on uh one eighteen in Yukon, yes, the, the encampment started growing underneath of that overpass over there, you know, when I go by one twenty, I can see it. So he's, he's right on the money, so we need to do something on that one over there. Thank you, the staff, and thank you for, our city manager Juan, for your uh accomplished list of things that was done. It is about, I don't know, six pages of things that all the department have accomplished for these past two weeks, so thank you for all the report. Uh again, like Ms. Valentine, I say thank you, Felice, and, and for your leadership, Juan, for the, for the budget. So we, we not like the state that have to be threatened to get the budget ready before Ju-, before July first, so thank you for that. Um thank you uh the police department for the event that they host on um, on Saturday. I guess you guys got more calls than you anticipated, so um unfortunately, I wasn't ever able to attend because I was out of town, but I heard good things about it, so thank you for that. And also, we got a new business open on a one twenty. I think it's some sweets, right? So um thank you for that too. Also, you know, the Memorial Day, you know, remember on, on, on May thirtieth, we celebrate we, you know, celebrate and, and remember all the fallen heroes of our military. Uh so the post three fourteen and the, and auxiliary and the post twenty seventy-five, they're not sending job at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And then we have lunch at the post three fourteen, so thank you for that. The West Basin Water District is having a program, uh grass replacement rebate. If you want to replace your lawn with artificial grass, uh they will give you three dollar per square footage, is free money. So, so because of the water shortage? So if you go to the uh www dot westbasin dot org, uh you will find more information about how to apply uh for the rebate money. That is three dollar per square footage for any lawn that's been replaced with artificial uh grass or, you know, those tolerant plants, okay? Just keep in mind, the uh Hawthorne Historic Society is gonna have their Hall of Fame induction on August sixth, uh Saturday, August sixth, at the Aris Hotel at six PM. And they did an outstanding job last week. Uh they brought the Golden State Water for their uh speaker night, talk about water, where the water come from and how this shortage of water in California, so. And remember, as June first started, you can only um put water in your lawn twice a week. as the June first started, you can only, um, put water in your lawn twice a week. You cannot every gate your, yeah, so only twice a week. Again, uh, like Ms. Valentine said, the, the, the Juneteenth is gonna be on Saturday from eleven to three, uh, and we're gonna have, uh, a lot of fun there. And again, to remind people about our centennial, because there is a lot of events going on, so Friday, the eighth, is the dinner, and you can buy tickets or you can buy a table, like nonprofits two-fifty, businesses five-hundred, and then the parade on July nine, that's gonna end at, right here in a hundred-and-twenty-six-square-block party. And then on the tenth is the, uh, day at the museum, that's gonna have barbecue lunch. So it started ten AM also at the museum. And then on the twelve, we're gonna have the open up the capsule, uh, the time capsule at, from twelve, from ten to, to twelve, right here at City Hall. And just keep in mind that, uh, I saw, you know, something on the budget that, that, you know, uh, is, is outstanding, especially for the public work department, because they bring almost five million dollar on grants from Measure H, Measure A, Measure R to our city to fix our roads, streets. So thank you for all that money that comes from the county, uh, and that doesn't come from our general funds, so we have to say thank you to the voters that keep passing all those Measure H, Measure R, Measure A, AR, or whatever, M, all of those, so thank you for those. Um, again, I want to congratulate all the students that I brought in today, nine of them that received scholarships from my, my three, uh, nonprofit, and, and those kids are bright and smart, you know, going to Columbia University and, and Cornell and King College, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not an easy task, so they had to be the brighter of the brightest, so, um, and we are producing these kids right here in Hawthorne, in our schools, so we have to say that, uh, thank you, and, uh, and I'm, I, I, I myself, you know, I understand, in the chi- in the past, uh, our schools was, was bad rap, but we have come far, far, and the schools on the top of the, in California, so thank you very much and good night.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Uh, Saturday, June eighteenth is actually my birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
So I'm turning forty-four, I believe. You know, once you get to a certain age, you stop paying attention. You just kinda stop. You gotta check your driver's license kinda know for sure, I think, right? I'm pretty sure.
We'll have a guest, a guest.
Now, look at all the gray in my beard that I've accumulated since the time I've been elected official, I don't know how it really is, but, um, but, let me see, there's a few residents brought up some important things, um, challenges that are happening, was it off of Yukon and one-on-five freeway? Um, gotta figure out what we can do about that, obviously. Let's see. Hawthorne Financial Literacy Workshop, very excited about that. Um, I really would like to encourage homeownership in the city of Hawthorne. I think, hopefully, we can also have some first-time homebuyer down payment assistance programs that, that we may be offering in the city of Hawthorne, but whether it happens or not, I'm glad that we have this financial literacy program that can help support people to become homeowners and, and get their finances in place. Um, I've gone through the home purchasing process a number of times throughout my life, and I remember the first time, it was very daunting and very scary and so a lot of terms you've never heard of before, and if you've done it, you know, a number of times, it, it becomes much less stressful, and I think a lot of people don't really know how easy it is to, to own a home now. It's much more challenging in LA County than it is in many other counties in this country, but it's still very, very possible, and so I'm excited that we, we're providing some kind of support and some education. There's a lot of people that live in Hawthorne, uh, that are renters, we're seventy percent renters, seventy-one percent renters, that are renters that, that can own, and I want to do everything that we can to help support that, um, that accomplishment. Let's see, recent election just passed, uh, that was noted, um, I'm very excited about, um, excited about it, right? My, me and my daughter, we went to a polling place in Long Beach, actually, and casted our vote, and, um, I, I like this new system that LA County implemented, you can go anywhere in the county and vote, they'll bring up your, you know, your ballot specific to you, and, um, you know, you enter it in electronically, it spits out the paper on paper, and you confirm it, and then you cast your ballot. I think it's a great system, um, plus everybody gets a, a mail-in ballot, so I'm, I'm very excited about that and excited the fact that our local races are at the top of the ballot as well, and so that really increases our local turnout, especially since we've moved over from being on odd years to even years. You know, my election, well, I think we had the largest local turnout in the history of Hawthorne, about twenty-nine thousand people voted, and I would hope, well, we'll have something similar this November. So, uh, anything that encourages or makes it easier for people to vote is just spectacular, and we voted on Sunday before Election Day, you can vote ten days up until Election Day. So some of these things, there are things that, you know, you already know, I, I just wanted to kinda highlight them, I think they're spectacular, and a good friend of mine, who I, I helped volunteer on our campaign, um, uh, ran for judge and, uh, came in first, um, so she may, she may get elected, uh, to be a judge in November. If she is, she'll be the first public defender to ever get elected judge. Most public defenders are appointed, uh, usually, um, prosecutors are, are, are elected. This is kinda interesting, uh, so it's kinda changing things up. Um, and one of the things I'm proud about, about that election is it forced a lot of the candidates to actually campaign for judge. I don't know if you guys have ever noticed that most judge candidates don't have a campaign, they just put their name on the ballot, you have no idea who they are, what they're about, what they support, what, who they're endorsed by, and I think that's changing, which I'm very excited about. Um, you know, the, the, all these positions have so much weight in our, in our lives and most people are just busy with their life and don't really know, and, um, people that you elect for judge or the people that, uh, rule on a lot of these things that we're talking about, uh, a lot of things that, that, you know, we deal with every day, whether it be, uh, family law issues, uh, traffic court issues, misdemeanors, right, our felony stuff. Um, and then speaking of that, I'm gonna jump around a little bit, go on to the, talk, talk about the charter. Uh, I just want to confirm that, you know, on the charter, we talked about, um, um, kinda codifying that we had our own misdemeanors, and I just wanted to ask or confirm that, that, if that passed, that, that wouldn't be able to be taken from us, uh, that the county couldn't decide to say, no, we want to take misdemeanors away from you guys.
Um, still under the state law, uh, system, um, the, the district attorney actually gives a permission, consents to city having a, its own misdemeanor prosecution unit. Hawthorne has for, by tradition, for the longest, it goes back, I don't know how many years, since we always had the misdemeanor prosecution that the city handled, um, that we, we're kinda grandfathered in, and there are several cities like that, and mostly bigger cities and in South Bay, uh, we have, we're on the beach, Inglewood, Torrance, and Hawthorne, and, uh, Long Beach has their own, and city, of course, city of LA has their own. But the fact that most of those cities with their own prosecution units are charter cities, but you still have to, it's through the government code makes it so this, Attorney General gives consent to district attorneys in the counties to prosecute felonies and whatnot, district attorneys can give consent to cities to prosecute its own misdemeanor cases. So I don't think being a charter city really will make a distinction on that issue.
Got it, got it. I'm glad that's something we do, we do have the ability to handle. I'm gonna be brief since my bell went off, um, telehealth, uh, I think if that's something we continue, we should definitely, see if we can do in partnership with some other organizations like BHS, have them help out with that cost, cause it looks like it's a large expansion, mostly what we're doing is referring to BHS, so it's something we, we gotta, we gotta look at. Uh, the IOUs and the net metering, um, deal, uh, the tax on that, I want to get some more information on that, about that, doesn't seem like that's something that we should have. Um, the, the gentleman came up, talked about solar and, um, you know, producing our own energy, that, that there wants to be some kind of tax on that, don't, don't like that at all. And, um, AB two-zero-eleven, you know, I do support housing, do support housing development and affordable housing, I support local control a lot more, so definitely doesn't make any sense. And then lastly, going back to the, the charter, I want to say I do, uh, fully support the, the charter that's being presented, um, obviously, we want to make sure that the community supports it and it's up to them to, to pass it. I, um, I believe that the city council should have greater compensation at six hundred dollars per month. I think it's ridiculous that that's what, what we try to, how we try to attract people to be, to look after our cities with, with that kind of compensation. You look at some of our neighboring cities who, um, have, um, greater compensation, they're going through a lot of economic development, um, attracting a lot of great things, uh, to their cities. I'm not saying it's strictly because their elected officials get to focus on their city more, but I'm sure that doesn't hurt. Um, I, I would be open to amending the, um, language of the compen- compensation, that's something we can discuss, um, but I definitely think that the charter's a great idea and definitely fully support it. Um, and, for that being said, um, yeah, happy Juneteenth.
Oh, we need to make sure you have, do it under your thing.
So, um, yesterday I did, uh, attend a Zoom training for the prime gov, you know, the city council agenda, that they're trying to do it electronically instead of all this binder. So can we have a presentation, Eitman, on the next meeting in the twenty-eight for the prime gov? It's like five minutes to tell you how it works, okay? I think it's pretty good. And the other thing that I want us to, to put on our books, Juneteenth, I want us to make a, a city event, because, uh, I, I tried to help the Holly Park and, um, and Park Village, but I want to make it as, as a city event, sponsor city event, um, so we can have more resources.
Alright.
Can I have a concord?
Yeah, absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we agree? Okay, oh, okay. Good. See this sponsor event, Juneteenth for next year and beyond.
Did I, could we do it just like-
Especially if it falls on my birthday.
Could we do it like this or would it have to been agendized?
Uh, we'll, we'll agendize it, cause I believe we added certain events and I'm sure whether it was a consent calendar or resolution, I'll look into it.
I think it was already added, actually, but we'll see.
It, it's added as a city holiday ordinance.
Yeah, it's a holiday. Thank you, that's it.
So I wanna just commend our, uh, VFW and our American Legion for, uh, hosting a wonderful, uh, Memorial Day service, somber, yet, uh, it was, uh, very, very, uh, honoring of the, those who have passed, uh, with a lot of pomp and circumstance, and it was, uh, you know, it always gets, everybody gets emotional when they hear like the bell toll with people who are passing away, uh, currently, but, um, we remem- we memorialized all those who had passed in the actual wars that were, took place. So, uh, we thank them for their service, for those who have passed, given the ultimate sacrifice, and those who are currently serving. There's things happening in parts of the world where we're out there protecting our country's interests, and they're out there even if they agree with the politics of it all. They're just taking orders and just serving the country. So, uh, men and women. There was a new Robics that opened up on Hundred Twentieth and Crenshaw, in the little center, right next to the Quiznos. Uh, we invite the community to go to pay a visit. It's a minority-owned, uh, woman-owned, uh, franchise for Robics, a single mother, and she has a great story to tell as to how she started that, so we would like to see you guys go and support our local businesses. Okay? Looking forward to the centennial, that's gonna happen in, uh, a few weeks, a lot of, uh, there's a lot of beautiful history here in the city of Hawthorne. Um, it's the hundredth year anniversary, I'm proud to say I've been here for fifty of those years, half of the lifetime of the city, so very proud to call myself a Hawthornian, and I hope everybody else is here too, proud to say that they're from Hawthorne. And, uh, this is commentary, I always throw in a little bit of commentary, um, I think that if you've noticed, the city of Hawthorne, uh, is a great place to be, and unfortunately, at some point, there was people from certain parts of our city that never wanted to say that they were from Hawthorne. They wanted to, to say that they were Manhattan Beach adjacent, as if for some reason that would give them a little bit more, uh, distinction. I mean, hey, if you don't like being part of Hawthorne, you can go ahead and come up with some, something where you could, uh, change the zip code on your, your city area, except that what I'm hearing is a lot of people from those parts of Hawthorne starting to say that they're from Hawthorne, because we've done something right, we've brought the city around, we've brought great businesses, great industry here in the city, and we have a great schools in all corners, all the five districts that we have here in the city of Hawthorne, great high schools. Like I said, HMSA rates higher than all the other local high schools in our city. HMSA is on the US News and World, uh, Reports, rating higher than our other high schools here in central Hawthorne, along with our other schools that are within that same top one hundred, so that's a good thing. Uh, and we have a great police department that takes care of us, and I have not seen this number of employees, police officers, civilian staff in the police department that are from Hawthorne, that were raised here in the city of Hawthorne, or raised in Lenox, or raised in, uh, Inglewood, or in Wiseburn, that have come to work here in the city of Hawthorne as police officers and civilian workers, right, chief? Great number, yeah. Got some, some people that are still on the force that graduated from Lenox High School, if you guys remember Lenox High School. Some of you guys remember Alpha Beta across the, across the way, down on Hawthorne Boulevard, used to work there, Clark's Drugs, you know, all the different names, so we have a great history. Marilyn Monroe lived here for a period of time, we have a great artist, Russell Westbrook, even though he might not be doing too good right now, you know, with the basketball, uh, comes from the area, the Beach Boys. I actually went to see, uh, Brian Wilson at the Forum recently, last week, so that was an awesome concert, it was good to hear. He's not doing too well, but, you know, he was, he was on the piano. Chris Montez, Corrupt, I think, the rapper, was from Hawthorne. Yeah, really? I know you're a fan. Uh, Red Cross, you know, the, there's just so many, go on Wikipedia and you'll see all the notable people that are from the city of Hawthorne. So it's exciting stuff, uh, we're gonna celebrate and, uh, we're gonna spread the word and every, I want to see everybody out at the parade, there's gonna be some treats for you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you should get Elon Musk to be the grand marshal.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, we'll ask him. We'll ask him, see what he says.
Seen, you know, he was, you know, talking about Hawthorne the other day.
Yeah.
So, grand marshal, Elon Musk.
I would go back.
Oh, my God, really?
Sure.
But the whole thing is that in all corners of Hawthorne, people are really excited to be from Hawthorne, especially after they have to pay all that money to mortgages. You better be proud of the city, there's, yeah, you, you better be proud of where you're from, go ahead.
Yeah, just a, a short directive to staff, uh, would you please, um, update the list that we have for, um, eligible organizations for our stipends, because I noticed that the, um, the list is, uh, has a lot of dated items, things that, that, that really are out of date now, so we need an updated list for our stipends. Um, yeah, I'd like to, I, I, I still haven't given all I want to give for the rest of the year, but, um, I wanted to get, to get an updated list, so I'll know what's still eligible. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. City, Mr. City Manager, what is our number, what is the amount that we can give right now?
Everyone's amount is different depending on your balance, but each year you start out with a thousand dollars.
I would like to see if you could come back and, uh, see if everybody agrees, and if we don't, it's okay, if we can go back to the original two thousand.
We just approved the budget for twenty-two.
No, but, uh, we can kind of do inter-delineation, so that's not, doesn't necessarily have to happen.
Okay.
Yeah. And if we're able, and if there's some wiggle room, and if you say no, Mr. City Manager, if you don't want to support the residents like we do, just let us know.
Oh!
I'm using my political, no, no, look, if we're not able to, just let us, uh, let us know.
Actually, it was three thousand before.
I know, but you know who, uh, you know who made the motion to take that away? So for all those homeowners groups and all those groups out there, we were at a vulnerable time at that time, that we just voted to reduce it, but now, since we're, uh, opening up COVID, and there's so many organizations that need some help- I think it'd be good to allot something. And I'm, I take that back, Mr. City Manager, of course you're for the people, you're the one, that was the Parks and Rec director, you made some, you've been making so many things happen, so let's give a big round of applause to, to. Did I fix it?
And great job on those recruiting you and Ms. Eric.
I also want to commend the staff for their, all the organizing of the centennial, raising funds, being able to organize it, put all the mailings together, all these things together, all the announcements together. That takes a lot of work, and then we have community volunteers, is what you said, people that signed up, so it's a lot of work, okay? So thank you to you and staff. All right. If there's nothing further from my council colleagues, this meeting's adjourned at 8:50.